Good evening. This is the April 7 meeting of the Village Memoratic Board of Appeals. Our April meeting and all board, we have four board members here, Robin Kramer, Brian Goodson, Greta Henny. We also have Charles Gottlieb, our counsel, and Brittany here in the village. The one thing I want to point out initially is that the board operates with a total of five members generally. And in order for resolutions to get approved or acted upon, it generally requires three of the five. If there are only four members here, it also still requires three. So we don't know right now. We are short a member because of a resignation. And I'm hopeful we'll get a appointee will come in very soon. So if that poses a problem and someone wants to adjourn, you can address that if you have a question about that. So we do have a short board at this time. Okay, if and if you want an adjournment, please indicate that as soon as you can. Brittany, can you explain? Do they know how to indicate that? By raising the hand or something?
Yeah, they could just either send me an email or just let, you know, raise their hand and I will.
Super. Thank you. Thanks so much. All right, the procedures so that for those of you that aren't familiar with it, our procedures are that we call applications for public hearings that are on for tonight. And at that point, the applicant can commence speaking. We have your paperwork. Please point out particular highlights of it. There's no need to go through every item of it. And make your presentation. Board members may also ask questions of you. And try to ask anything so that you can respond. Members of the public are then be afforded a right to comment to the board. You don't comment to the applicant, you comment to the board. After the board has taken information in, it will then make a decision to close the hearing. Once the hearing is closed, no more information comes in. And the board will then deliberate it sometime and make a decision. However, that generally will not take place the same day as the hearing. And with what will take within two months to do so. Um. All right, now, we do have tonight a rather long agenda. We have five new public hearings and one prior one. We also have some matters that have to be discussed by the board following the public hearings must be on. And given the hour that we are now, and we want to end in the area of about 10:15. We're going to just ask, please, that for those of you that have spoken before on the topic, there's really no need to repeat everything. We have everything to try to just be as specific as you can. And come to the point on matters so that we can take that information from you that's important. As well as, you know, your general flavor of the matter. At the first hearing tonight is a continued hearing. I believe this is the third time it is on. And that is regarding 1260 Flagler Drive. We had an extensive hearing last month on this. And we have received some items since. And actually, I was rather surprised, but today we received a statement, I guess, from the Edgewater Point Property Owners Association. I'm surprised and dismayed. We hadn't received it previously, but I know that the applicant, I'd asked the office to make sure the applicant could get this because it might not be posted online in time. So we can move forward on it. So at this point, I'm going to go to the applicant. If the applicant wants to speak on this matter. Byomis, please.
Thank you. Good evening, Chairman Newfeld and members of the zoning board. For the record, Kristen Motel from the law firm Cuddy Invader. Here on behalf of the applicants and owners of the property Frank and Nina Cooper. Who are also here tonight and Brittany, I don't know if you could also bring them up as panelists. That would be helpful. Also Rick Yestat, who's with Yestra Architecture and Design, if he could be promoted as well as a panelist. To recap where we are very, very briefly, because I know the board is is familiar with this matter. The applicants are requesting side yard setback variances for alterations to the existing second floor of the single family home. The home is currently only one and a half stories. And the renovations will be within the confines of the existing footprint. The maximum height permitted by the zoning code and there they will avoid any ground disturbance or any change in impervious coverage. We were last before you in March and the board members requested some specific calculations regarding height and sidewall area. And cubic volume of the proposed addition. And so once Rick is is with us, he'll he'll take you just briefly through those numbers and be able to answer any questions that you all have. So this is
Sorry to interrupt you. Rick is not on. At least I don't see him. If he is, he has to raise his hand because I don't. It's not coming up in the list. So anyone that wants to be promoted, just please raise your hand. Thank you.
Thanks for that, Brittany. And Frank and Nina also. Okay, so the request before before this board, our sole request is for side yard variances for the second floor. So it's a very limited issue. We don't want to belabor it here before you tonight. We do want to note for the record and thank you, Chairman, for making sure that we've received a copy of those materials that were submitted today. We do have strong concerns about the EPPOA making a submission so close to your meeting. And really asserting some issues that are not relevant to the variance request before this board. The EPPOA has asserted that they do have approval jurisdiction. And in fact, most of the issues that they raised in their correspondence are not issues before the zoning board tonight. They're regarding a private matter between our clients and their HOA. So we would urge this board, since you know, you've been reviewing this for a few months now, to disregard anything except for what is relevant to the side yard setback evaluation. We're not here before you tonight for review of the proposed
We understand. We understand your point.
Great. Thank you. Thank you. And we would, when it comes to the proposed addition of the second floor within the area above the existing home that already encroaches into the side yard. The five factors balance in favor of granting the area variance that's requested. And with that being said, Rick, I'll ask you just to go through those calculations we provided in March and and answer any questions that the board members have about those.
I just have one quick question for you to clarify. I mean, I know the answer, but I want to just clear for the record. You're asking for the variance for the second floor, right? And that will be aligned with the first floor, correct?
Correct, yes.
And the first floor is compliant, correct?
The the first floor already encroaches into the side yards.
But it's compliant. Therefore, I mean, it's it's an existing
Correct. Yes, yes. The home was constructed in 1960. That's correct. So it predate
Okay, please. I'm good. I'm sorry. You were I interrupted you. I apologize.
No, that's okay. That's all right. Thank you for the clarification. Rick, go ahead.
Sure. So with regard to some of the clarifications from the last meeting, I'll go through the heights. There were some questions about heights, surface area and the bulk to compare existing and proposed. I'll start with the height. You can see this, I presume. Okay, so the existing the existing height of the primary ridge, looking at the front of the house, this is the front, is 25 feet from grade. The the proposed height on the right hand side here is 31 feet, eight inches to the highest point. And in the middle of the house and to the right to the highest point of the ridge is 25 feet, three inches. And I think it's important to note, here's the roof plan. The highest ridge that's 31 feet, eight inches is about nine percent of the total roof area seen here. So I think it's important to take into consideration with regard to the heights. And this was something we were trying to explain at the last meeting. So again, so just go through the rest of the elevations. The right hand side, again, we're showing here, you see the highest point of the existing ridge at 25 feet. The highest ridge of the proposed here on the right hand or south side of the building is 25 feet, three inches. So that's that primary ridge that you saw from the front. The 318 is, you know, beyond, but that that also exists in that in that drawing. The rear, again, just clarification, same 25 feet for the existing. 25 feet, three in this location and 31 feet, eight inches and at the highest point, which is about nine percent of the area of the roof. The right hand, I'm sorry, the left hand side, looking from the front or the north elevation. Again, this is the 25 feet existing ridge. This is the 31 foot, eight inch height for the for the highest point of the proposed structure. Then with regard, yeah, and just make the point. So 92, you know, about 90, 92% of the proposed roof is 25 feet, three inches or less. You know, as you can see, you know, that's the high point. The I'm going to the to the bulk calculation. So this is an illustration of what the numbers represent. So this is the right hand side, the south side of the property. So the existing is in pink and proposed is in the white. And we'll go through the numbers. This is the existing right hand side or south side. This is the north side, the left hand side as you're facing the the structure. So it's this volume, this white volume that's in the charts and the the colored area below is preexisting nonconforming. So just take a minute, bring up the chart. That was submitted. So with regard to the square footage calculation, the left side or the north side. There was a typo there. It said 20, it said 33 should be 37%. The right hand side, south side is a 26.7% increase. Regarding the bulk, again, as submitted, the right hand side or the south side. There's a 55% increase and the left side, the north side of the proposal, 69% increase. And I just wait, make one final point with regard to the square footage because there is a you know, it's important to know how that number is calculated. So we're in this number, we include the dormers. And I'll just quickly illustrate why that is. We think it's a logical approach. And this is a photograph of the north side of the building. So in our numbers, you, which we think is a more realistic way to calculate the existing square footage of the sidewall is to include the dormer, the dormers. You can see from the photograph that this surface is within six or seven inches of the plane of the exterior wall below. And this surface is maybe a little more 16, 17 inches away from the the sidewall below. So we we felt that was a more realistic number to present to the board in terms of substantiality.
Do you have a number that on your second part of that schedule, which is called sidewall square footage? Want to make sure I understand that you have that left sidewall. It's now 37%, right?
Yes.
Okay, and below that is the 26%. If that's when you're that 37% is a 37% increase of what's in the nonconforming area. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay.
So it's existing versus proposed.
Square footage, correct?
Yeah.
It's existing versus proposed doesn't say, just to to repeat what Dave said to clarify it because I was confused also. The existing is 924. That doesn't says say it's in the noncomplying air side yard.
And I think he means it is, right? Yeah.
I just want to make sure because when he just because something Brian asked made him made it seem like maybe it wasn't. So the percent increases percent increase in the noncomplying side yard, correct?
Correct.
And this 55% similarly is the percentage increase of the right side wall in the noncomplying a side yard, correct?
Correct.
Or 69% on what's the difference between this calculation and this calculation? This is a total square footage of the area versus just the size of the sidewall?
Wait, you're saying from the difference between bulk and sidewall?
Yeah, I'm saying so the bottom one, the one that says bulk is the total square footage of the area in the noncomplying side yard. And this is just the size of the sidewall in the noncomplying side yard. So in other words, there's 69% more square footage of building in the noncomplying left side yard than there is now?
Um. I don't cubic, Robin, it's cubic feet. So it's not square feet. It's cubic. It's a volume.
It's a volume. So there's 69% more volume of space in the noncomplying side yard after the renovation than before, correct?
Correct.
That's correct. And that's also because on that particular side, right, the existing store is houses one and a half stories, right? So there's volume being added above that existing structure.
Right, but it's still being added, whether it's doing it to make it a straight line on the side or not, it's still being added.
Right.
Okay. Okay, and can you go back to the, yeah, we never talk, we haven't really talked about this, but and it's something we often don't get to, I will say, to your zoning zoning chart, couple of pages before you had a zoning chart.
Um, from the architectural drawings?
Yes, you just showed it to us when you were going through your your proposal. Your basic zoning compliance chart. Because I'm looking for it on the plans that we have, but I actually can't find it either. So it's obviously there somewhere, but I'm not 100% sure where. And I want to go through that. My request to
Let me bring that up.
Yeah, I'm going through the plans, the file, the drawings, and I just, I don't, I'm sure it's there, but I can't find it right now. So if you can find it, that would be great.
I've lost you guys. I don't see the share button any longer.
Still allowing you to share.
What are you bringing up now?
I'm asking because I want to go, I want to look at the zoning chart. He did. There's a zoning compliance chart. I'm showing the zoning, the side yards, the rear yards and all the other zoning requirements. And he had the chart. We went, he went through it in his review a few minutes ago, and I want to get back there because I have a question about it. And I don't have it in front of me, so I can't find it in the filed documents. Again, I'm sure it's there. I just can't find it. And therefore, oh, I see it. I've got it. So that's I can ask from this one, even if you can't find. And here's my question. One of the I just have it on page. If you're going to the what's posted online, it's page 137. On the novice agenda.
Okay.
137. Okay. So my question is this, one of the findings is that you couldn't achieve your desired goal through any other means. And you have a very large existing front yard and you have a very large rear yard, both of which exceed what is required. And the question is, did you look to do this any other way? Did you mean presumably the goal of this is to make it look nicer and to give them more space? Did you look at designing the building in a different way that would not interfere with the noncompliance condition? And given that you have so much space, this isn't what you know, doesn't look like it's one of those properties where you don't really have a choice because it's a small lot. You have a big lot here. And as I say, your your minimum for you notice 25 feet, you have almost 59 feet of front yard, your rear yard is 30 feet, you have 57 feet of rear yard. Did you think about doing this in any other way? And if so, why don't you do it in another way? And if not, why not? So those are my questions.
Okay, yes, we did look at various alternatives and, you know, because costs, you know, we were balancing costs and and site disruption issues, you know, because of its location near the water. So the 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 options were somewhat, you know, we're definitely limited in in that regard.
Rick, if I can, if I just jump into on that note, um, we we looked at all that, but the goal, as Rick said, was to avoid any ground disturbance or change in impervious coverage and increase in that because you know that we're so close to the water, we have to worry about impacts to to the coastline directly within or near proximity to wetland buffers and all the impacts that come along with that. So this proposal doesn't add any ground disturbance. It doesn't add any impervious coverage. And so the environmental impacts associated with it are far less than what would be proposed in that in that kind of scenario. And Rick, I'm sorry to cut you off if there's if there's anything else you want to add.
Yeah, no, no problem. And then I think we made the point the last time, which is the secondary stair is partially within the setback line. So there was a limitation, a practical limitation that we felt. There's also in this hatched area, of course, there there is you know, existing square footage on the second floor, but much of it is compromised in its height because of the dormers and the way they're configured. So these, the the options were 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 limited. And we we felt that this was a reasonable proposal as presented.
All right, Mattel, do you have anything else that you want to put on now?
I do just want to add something, just a a comment. Sure, a comment on the 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 increase in percentages for bulk cubic feet. And certainly, some of those numbers do seem large, but the it's viewing that in this totality of the circumstances, right substantiality. I mean, you're looking at a one and a half story house. And something is being proposed that's with it, that's less than the the total height that's permitted. So and certainly there are there's factors to consider there. So while that number is in itself, a larger number, looking, taking a step back and looking at what this really is when it comes to just a small portion on each side of the second floor. And viewing this in the totality of the circumstances as opposed to just zoning in on that one particular number, I would just encourage encourage that to be part of the review process here.
Well, one of the things I thought of is, in essence, another way to look at your percentages, just to flip it to another approach because they did seem large, was if you took the amount of existing noncompliant to the total space versus the future noncompliant to the total space. And that would give you another approach. Than just dealing with the noncompliant against the noncompliant.
Right, that's interesting.
Could you explain that, Dave, please? I don't understand.
Yeah, well, there there it's it's not the different really, and it's just a little different approach. And now you're saying this percentage, I'm increasing my noncompliance space by X. So you're starting with every every foot you do is going to be another percentage of whatever, however you do it. But I was curious about right now, what percentage of the entire square footage is in the noncompliant area? So if I took the whole house and I said, okay, pick a percent just out of the air, 10% is in the noncompliant area. Okay, now, after this is done, you've added on space on the noncompliant area as well as in the compliant area. So okay, how much now? What will that percentage be? I don't know. Does that increase? Does it not increase? I have no idea. But it just struck me as another approach to getting an understanding about a perspective on the number. Because from my vantage point, certainly, it's it's valuable to know the increase in the non noncompliant by adding on in the noncompliant and staying there for the analysis. But part of it is the overall. What percentage is really noncompliant? And how will that really change by this, if at all?
Does anyone want to comment on that?
Yeah, I mean, it's a you know, that's a a yeah. I think a good way to look at it is because the total site
Right.
You know, that's a that's a total site.
Which I think is more how we view matters with regard to residential homes, like look at the totality as opposed. We understand there's a technical, not a technical, there is an actual noncompliance violation potential. All right. Would that be difficult to do just for the record?
No, that wouldn't be difficult.
Well, if we stay open or I don't think we keep it on, I wouldn't mind seeing it just because I think it's it's just another perspective on the totality. But okay, did the applicant have anything further to add at this time?
No, we don't have anything further to add at this time.
Do any board members have any questions of the applicant at this time? If not, then do and does anyone here have any want to speak on this matter? Do we have anybody?
Yes, I'm promoting some one moment. Good evening, everyone. Helen March, the law firm of Minser March, PLLC. I'm sorry, I'm having trouble getting my video to start.
Right, good evening. I believe you you were here one meeting, and I believe you also sent us a letter, correct?
That is, that is correct, Mr. Chairman. I still am not able to to start my video. Let let me begin because I know you have a long agenda tonight. And I want to
Well, why don't you address items, if I may request, if you could just address items that are not the subject of your letter? But or your highlights, we wanted to highlight it.
I will highlight. I will highlight. And I am here on behalf of Terry Vandell and Isabel Phoenix, who are next door neighbors to the applicant. They live at 1280 Flagler Drive. There are two main points I would like to address this evening. First, every single one of the factors that this board must consider under village law weighs against granting of the variances. And it would not be rational for this board to grant the variances. Secondly, the project as it's proposed cannot be built. So I would like to speak to those two points if you would allow me to.
If you, I want to ask you first, when you say it cannot be built, is that because of other requirements by other codes, laws or regulations?
Yes.
I think that's not before us. I'll defer to counsel on asking, but it seems to me that's a matter of the merit. Anything we ever do is a resolution. Anything we ever do as a resolution is always subject compliance with all of the requirements. So what you're saying is that if someone gets approval here and then cannot get the the, whether it's a building permit or something else. Well, then, that's right, then they they've they have to lose at some level if they're going to lose, I suppose. But I mean, I don't know how, we're not going to go involved with now what another permit would involve and why it is they can get it or not. Well, Charlie, you have anything to air on that? If you have any comment, by all means, you can do it openly, I'm fine with it.
No, I would agree, this board has been tasked with just um analyzing and reviewing the area variances that have been requested.
Well, I I understand that, but we are submitting to this board. That it is, it makes sense to let this application find out if this is a project that actually can be approved. Because it does not, it does not comply with FEMA regulations. And 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 it goes, it goes to one of the factors, Mr. Chair, so so if I could just just get through my remarks.
If you speak to the fact, excuse me, if you speak to the factors, of course.
I will.
If you speak to why FEMA is violated or not violated, I don't think that's appropriate.
I am going to speak to the factors and tie it all together. One thing that we want to make sure does not get lost in this in this is that. Side yard setback requirements are intended to preserve open space unobstructed, not just at the ground level. Not just on the first floor, but for the entire column of the space above. The proposed project substantially increases the volume of the structure in the side yard setback area. Which again is supposed to remain on the unobstructed per the code. The increase to the existing side yard setback non-conformity is substantial, any way you look at it. Whether you use Arthur Wexler's calculations or those of the applicant. The increase in wall surface area and volume in a non-conforming setback area is substantial. The numbers are before you, the chair has asked for them to be recalculated a different way. We submit that they are undeniably substantial increases that weigh against granting of the variances. The fact that the variances are for the second floor only doesn't change the numbers or make them less substantial. The addition of substantial volume and surface area in the side yard setbacks, which are currently unobstructed. Will unquestionably be a detriment to the neighboring properties. The detriment to the adjoining neighbors also weighs against granting of the variances. In addition to the photographs that, in addition, I'm sorry, the photographs that the applicant submitted. In an attempt to show consistency of the project with the neighbor neighborhood's land use patterns is unconvincing. And it's somewhat puzzling that the three homes that the applicant highlights as indicative of the land use pattern in the neighborhood. Thirteen thirty seven, thirteen forty seven and thirteen fifty seven of Flagler are smaller homes. With second stories that have approximately thirty percent less floor area than the first floor. Which completely debunks the notion that the second stories mirror the first stories throughout the neighborhood. To the extent that there may be other non-conforming side yards in the neighborhood. The applicants have not shown that these are relevant to the analysis at all under Court of Appeals precedent, which we cite in our prior letters. And I know that this board knows well, the Cario case and others. Are there feasible alternative designs? Ms. Kramer asked that question that would allow the applicants to achieve their objective of more living space on the second floor. The applicants say no, but we we don't know what alternatives, if any, were looked at seriously and in good faith. That would allow the renovation of the home in a less intrusive manner. We also don't know where where the wetland line is, I I don't recall seeing any any um. Any discussion of that, if that if that was a reason, it has not been articulated until this evening. We know that at least one experienced architect believes that there are feasible alternative designs that could achieve the goal of more second floor living space. But there's nothing in this record that would support a finding that the variances requested are the minimum variances necessary to achieve the applicant's goal. Um, finally, the applicants have said that they are not proposing to disturb the footprint of the house. And therefore, there is no impact on the physical environment, this is one of the factors. This assertion of no land disturbance should be scrutinized. The house is in a coastal high flood hazard area, it's on an island. And it's required to be flood resistant if there are substantial improvements made to it. What's proposed here is undeniably a substantial improvements. Based on town assessment cards, the value of the home is seven hundred thousand, so you have improvements over three hundred and fifty thousand or substantial improvements. And the village code incorporates the FEMA rules. And says that the house has to be raised two feet above base flood elevation, which is fourteen feet. The proposed project before this board is at an elevation of twelve point six feet. And again, we think it makes the most sense for this board to know whether this structure can be built as it's proposed before it issues a decision on variances. Enclosing the benefit to the applicants in having this this proposed structure. Which substantially encroaches into the unobstructed side yard setback areas. And can't be built under FEMA rules is outweighed by the detriment to the health, safety and general welfare of the community. Reducing open space in non-conforming setbacks also sets a bad precedent. And runs counter to the purpose and intent of the zoning code, which seeks to preserve open space in setbacks. Those are my remarks, I'm happy to answer any questions, and I do apologize for my scratchy throat, I I have a bit of a cold.
Okay, we'll feel better, thank you very much. Um, does it, anyone in the, um, did anyone have any questions of the person just back this much? There anyone else here tonight who wants to speak to this, please? Brittany, anyone else?
I'm promoting Arthur Wexler.
Oh, this is Mr. Wexler?
Yep.
Before.
Just unmute yourself, Arthur, you're still muted.
Can you hear me now?
Yeah, good evening, Mr. Wexler.
All right, good evening.
Well, okay, I just want to begin by telling you, I know you spoke at the hour here, we're trying to move this hearing along.
I know, but.
May I finish speaking for a moment? Thank you.
Sure.
What I am saying is that you you spoke previously and you've made submissions to the board. So all I'm asking is that anything you address now, please, please try not, do not cover that. Let's just go forward if there's anything new you want to add.
Yes. At, Mr. Newfeld, the last meeting, you asked me if I can calculate the change in the volume. Of the proposed. Second floor to what exists, and I believe I was able to do it painfully by hand, meaning without having to file. I'd like to share the um that with you.
Is that number being contested, or didn't the applicant already state those bulk?
Now, this is the differential of the volumes. Meaning, the percentage differen- I thought you were saying. Cat will be beneficial to know what the volume on the second floor in the non-conforming area is versus. I think so, just recently, yes, firstly, he asked me to do it last last week, last month.
Hi, whatever.
Okay, so the existing volume of of the addition of the house on the second floor. Which sits in the required side yard is four thousand three hundred and thirty four point six. Cubic feet, the proposed volume. That is. In the proposal for the second floor. Of the volume is seven thousand four hundred and eighty six. Cubic feet, which is a difference of seventy two point twenty seven percent increase. Excuse me?
In the cubic feet, correct?
In cubic feet, that's correct.
Do you have this in writing that you could submit this?
No, I submitted it, it's in my S K two drawing, it's in the package.
I I it wasn't, is that the percentage of bulk on the second floor or the percentage of the bulk on the second floor in the non-compliant side yard?
The bot- the bottom drawing is the existing, which is in gray. The upper drawing is the proposed, which is in is in like a tan color. Can you see my S K two? Does she have my screen?
Yeah, I have.
I know you sent it, but I'm looking at it.
Just share it now, Arthur, you have access, you can share it.
Okay, so it's on my screen now.
It's S K two?
S K two, this is the view.
From the west, existing west elevation, right, I'm with you.
Well, west, it's really north, I'm not sure which, you know, it's in between. So the bottom drawing in gray is the volume of the structure that sits in the required setback.
Could you, can you, Arthur, can you share your screen? Because I can't find it, I know it was submitted, because I saw it, but I didn't.
Look under, um.
Uh, hold on, I I have it on my screen, so how do I share the screen? Hold it.
Uh, Brittany, can you let him share his screen if there's something you have to do?
He has access to, you just have to hit share screen.
Okay.
I'm looking for my share screen, hold it, I'm going to reduce this, hold it. Hold it, share screen. I just clicked it. I'll try it again. Hold on, I'll get there. Can you see that now?
You have a question about this this diagram, Robin?
I I'd like to, but I I I just want to understand it, something about it.
Okay, so I'll I'll go, I'll repeat again.
I can share it, let me get it, not share for everyone.
I don't see it, by the way, on the 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 novice.
It's there, it's it's under Helen March, it was all combined into one, because it was, it was a.
Page ninety six, yeah.
Page ninety six?
On the one I have, yeah, I don't know, I don't use novice, I have another.
Why, the rest came in too many pieces, so I have it too many pieces, so.
Oh, I got that from, I think it was a the recent submission in April.
Right, but there are multiple recent submissions, so that's why I liked to.
I'm with it, I'm with it, all right.
One place.
Mr. Wexler, while they're pulling that up, because we're running out, running out of time.
I'm trying.
Let me, let me, I was asking you a question, I said, wow, we're working this up. When you talked about within the required setback, I I what can you explain what you mean by that, so we're all talking the same line?
This this side yard needs a requirement of twenty five feet. The the hat, the existing house projects about nine and a half feet, nine feet average into the into the um side yard. So when I say required setback, that means what's on the zoning chart, twenty five feet. It's ten feet into the plus or minus into the, in exists into that side yard. They're proposing to build up a structure in above the structure below it at that ten foot mark. That's about fifteen feet from uh twelve forty Flagler Drive.
Um, Arthur, the 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 architect, uh, Rick, had a percentage increase in the cubic volume and the volume as well. Do you have different numbers than he does?
Yeah, I think, and I think I know why. In the back of the, they're proposing to put a terrace on the whole length of the back of the house. Roofed over with side walls that are a foot thick. By your code, that becomes a porch, and a porch is part of the building. And then is viewed from either twelve forty or twelve six, twelve sixty, I think, twelve sixty, yes. The, oh, I'm sorry, twelve eighty is what they see and the impact of that. So I took this drawing, which is eight S K two. I outlined on the low drawing, the existing, I put a tone over the existing portion on the second floor. That is in the setback. I then outlined with top with with strong dotted lines, what is being proposed. And then the drawing above it on the same sheet, S K two, in that, if if you're viewing it in color. It is in a tan color, and I calculated the cubic feet in both those areas. And you can see to the left of the existing house in that tan color. It projects out about three and a half, four, four feet, I haven't got a scale on this. Where that porch occurs and it's covered by the roof and it becomes volume to the house.
Are you saying he didn't, he that there's parts?
That's not in his drawings, he stopped it at the at the extent of the house itself facing long round sound. So there is about five hundred square feet, cubic feet more in that area, not more.
But if it's in the rear, only the portion that's in the non-compliant side yard is is non-compliant, everything else is complying.
Yes, that's what I'm showing. I'm showing the proposed volume above the level of the second floor in the non-conforming area of the setback is seven thousand four hundred and eighty six cubic feet. The existing in that same area is four thousand three hundred and thirty five. Cubic feet, and the differential is about seventy two point twenty seven, and that's rather a grand excessive excessive in. Increase when you're specially building almost ten feet into your side yard. Which you couldn't do as a right.
Arthur, are you saying that this porch extends the four feet on both?
Along the whole back of the of the house.
And there's a wall on each.
At each side and is roofed over.
And that's not in, that's not in the applicant's uh drawings?
And now, it's not in the analysis.
Not in the analysis.
You have to realize that the second floor has a ceiling height of almost ten feet. And if you, if I was the architect, not if I was the architect, but if you you're trying to make the minimum requirement. Or intrusion into the side yards, you would try to analyze it in a way that you would actually ask. Not for the the least amount. At least the the least amount, not the maximum amount. If I show you the other side.
Arthur, I I have it up, what page do you want to show?
I think I just opened it up, can you see?
No, I, it's it's, we can't see yours, I'm doing it on mine, so which page would you like?
Okay.
I have all the up, just let me know the number.
Uh, S K four. We're successful?
Yep, it's up.
Yeah.
Okay, so the bot- it's the same philosophy, the bottom drawing shows a triangle. And the area of of that triangle. And then generating volume from it is that area that's only in the non-conforming area. And that has five hundred and forty five point, sorry, comma, thirty eight uh cubic feet. And up above is nine hundred and twenty three. Cubic feet giving an increase of sixty nine point two cubic feet. I mean, I sent difference of six, almost seventy percent. I think rather excessive when you're trying to minimize your input. Or. You're trying to minimize the input into the required side yard. Talking about to the structure, that's that is the third floor and the stair, if that structure.
Are the ones that, so the difference on that is the five four, is the nine twenty three less the five forty five, right?
That's correct, that's a my calculation, this is the easy side to calculate, yes.
Okay, all right, anything else on this?
Yeah, I'd like to stress that. You're asking me.
Yeah. Is there anything else you want to add on it?
Yeah, I would like to say first off that uh, miss, miss, Mr. and Mrs. Milstein. Agree with the analysis that was presented due by the association and also by um. This is Mrs. Mo, this is March. Um, it, there are other solutions to this, and we haven't seen any of them yet. And I think there is potential to minimize the impact on on the neighbors.
All right, thank you very much, sir.
I have a question for the architect, no, no, the Rick, I have a que- Rick, or just maybe this is for Brittany. The calculations that you did, um, Rick, that you discussed earlier. Where there's a disagreement between what you and what Arthur has, is that was that submitted, I mean, do we have that copy of that in our files?
Yes.
We do, okay, because I'm trying to, I want to be able to look at this after the meeting and and.
Yeah, and you know, um. We can.
Was it the comparison chart, Rick?
Yeah, I mean.
I have it.
Yeah, I mean, I'll just go through a couple of things that.
Well, wait a second, wait a second. Whoa, whoa, we just finished with someone there. Is there anyone else before we go back to you? Is there anyone else who wants to speak? Yeah? If not, okay, uh, Miss Mattel, you want to continue with Rick at this time?
Sure. So the way, um, that the bulk was, um, calculated, you know, using the three-dimensional software that we have at our disposal. It, it was a, a more strict definition of bulk, uh, you know, um, in, in other words, it did not include architectural detail. So in that, uh, in that way, you know, we, we took the, the term bulk literally, you know, it's the bulk of the, of the building. So, you know, as, as a comparison of, um, interior space, if you will, but you know, it's a gross number to the exterior wall. So, so that's, uh, that's the, the difference, uh, of interpretation of how to calculate the bulk. You know, so that, um, um, the number, uh, that, um, was quoted about five hundred cubic square feet additional is correct. Uh, but again, we took the, um, the approach that the, the bulk meant the envelope, you know, the envelope without the, um, without the detail. So for instance, you know, yeah, we're not, we're not including soffits and railings and that nature. It's just the, the envelope.
So I, thanks, Rick. And there, there's just one additional point that I'd like to note, Mr. Chairman, if I may, for the record. Um, regarding the, the increase in overall surface area and bulk, those, um, the screen walls were mentioned along the back. Um, a large portion of the bulk that is proposed, um, it has to do with those privacy screen walls. Those were not originally proposed in the project. This is what, what the board is seeing and what we've presented, um, to you has been modified over the last several years as a result of, of correspondence with the neighbors, reviews, comments. And those screen walls were added as the result of, of the neighbors' request to do that. Um, and it's my understanding and the applicants here tonight that if, uh, and, and that, that results, and I believe, Rick, correct me if I'm wrong, about a fifteen percent um, increase in, in those numbers. So, you know, if, if the board feels that that's substantial, I, I don't think the applicant has any problem removing those walls and getting rid of that additional bulk. That was just purely a modification as the result of, um, collaborating with the neighbor. So I do just want to add that and let the, let the board know that we.
Can you just? I'm sorry, can you describe or show the screen walls, which, what you added at the request of the neighbors?
Yeah, um.
So I can understand it fully?
Yeah, can you see my cursor? Can you see my cursor?
Yes, I see your cursor.
Okay, so this rectangular shape is a screen wall. There's nothing behind it. This rectangular shape is a screen wall. Nothing's behind it.
So it adds, so it adds area in terms of this amount of wall, but it doesn't add anything in terms of the amount of bulk, correct?
Correct, and that was added as, as like a privacy feature. It's my understanding that that was the concern.
Yes, which, which the board has a copy of the memorandum that was sent to the Neighborhoods Association and all done in the spirit of, um, cooperating with the neighbors.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, um. Is there anyone here from Edgewater Point Property Owners? I, we did get that. I just wanted to know, it says it's from the directors there. Just how many directors there are, remember?
I don't have anyone raising, uh, hold on, one person just raised their hand.
All I want is to know is if there are, I should have asked if they were director. Ask her, right?
Brittany, did you promote me?
No, you are promoted. You're already there. I promoted the gentleman who raises his hand, but it's.
Okay, that's fine. Alright, well, anyone else who wants to speak on this? The last has spoken.
Well, uh, Mr. Chairman, this is Helen Moch again from Mr. Moch, um, on, on, on the, on the, so, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, um, regarding the statement that the privacy walls were added at the request of the neighbors. Um, I can tell you on behalf of my client, my clients who live at twelve eighty, uh, those were not requested by them, so.
Thank you very much, okay.
Excuse me, I can, I just figured out how to work this. I'm a member, uh, director.
Okay, oh, thank you. Your name, please?
David Keys.
Okay, excuse me, I just have a quick, two, two quick questions for you. Um, we just received this statement from the directors. How many directors are there?
Uh, it's a good question, uh, six.
Good, and, uh, this was voted on by the directors, correct?
Yes.
Okay, it did not go to the membership for vote, or did it go to the membership?
No, did not, and one director was, uh, was not able, was, would recuse himself.
Oh, okay, that, okay, thank you very much. I appreciate that. Alright. Is there anything else on this? It's not, want to close the hearing here? Is there a motion on the closing?
Uh, well, Chairman, is there additional information that the board was requesting before we close?
The, the only items with a percentage items that I talked about, I mean, I don't know. I'm sorry?
I think that's relevant.
Yeah, I agree, I do. Can we, can we close subject to getting in the calculations and then if, if there's an issue on that, we can hear the issue?
You want to close while we're waiting for information that we might have questions about? Well, I'm trying to.
The way you put it was very different than the way I did. I would compare with your positions, but, um.
I don't know if we're gonna have questions on that.
I think it's basically what I want to do is limit it and close everything except if there are comments or questions about the calculations. I just don't want to revisit it otherwise. Otherwise, I would say close it without it, but. The whole point is.
We would be, we would be willing to, to agree with you to, to close the hearing and keep the written record open, uh, for the board to consider.
But only on the calculation issue?
Correct, correct.
Alright, I'm good with that, Charlie, is that okay?
Well, here's my question. In order to reopen the hearing, don't we need a unanimous vote?
No, because we would close it subject to receipt of the calculations. Comment, only concerning the calculations. And with the right of the board to, to conduct the hearing if, if, if there's some kind, I mean, if you think there's going to be an issue.
I have no idea if there's going to be, I haven't seen it yet. I can't, I can't really.
Okay, well, I think it's a mathematical formula is what I've been, I've, but whatever you want is fine.
If I have a member.
I'm very, I'm very concerned about keeping it open.
I, I understand it's been here a while.
So I would say I would just close it subject to that and if a majority of the board feels to reopen it without the unanimous, without the need for unanimity. So it would be subject to that. Charlie, if we close that way, it would be alright?
Yeah, and I think a unanimous vote is only required to reopen a matter after it was voted on.
Yeah, but sometimes I think it could be argued, and I, I agree with you, but I think it'll be argued that a hearing is closed and it's reopening.
No, it's pretty, it's pretty typical to close and then keep it open for written comments like you're doing a lot of.
Right, but I'm not worried about that. We've done that before. It was the question of if we had questions on the new submission and we need to, and someone of the board members wants to ask questions, do we need unanimous, unanimity of the board in order to?
If questions relate to the calculations, no. If they relate to other matters, yes.
Okay.
That's how I would view it, but maybe Charlie doesn't agree. Why don't we cross that bridge when we get to the toll booth?
Dave, real quick, I have a neighbor who's a- asking to speak. Are we allowing anyone else? It's, uh, I believe it might be Arthur's client.
Arthur, and by the way, could you, Arthur is up on my screen here for some reason. I don't know why.
His hand is raised, but I can try to fix that. Uh, should I promote Mrs. Milstein or?
If she's going to speak on something new and could you also, yeah, I'm, Mr. Wexler, even take him off the screen because it's very complicated. He's the only person up here besides the board. And I guess so.
I had a question.
He has a question.
What's your question?
That.
When, this hearing's got five more minutes, so go ahead.
I, the drawing on SK two actually shows the differential in the volume.
Okay, great, thank you. Ms. Milstein, do you have something new to add, please?
I'm Mr. Chairman, just to address the issue of the privacy screens. Um, neither my husband or I agreed or requested privacy screens similar to twelve eighty flagler. Thank you.
Thank you very much for pointing that out to us, okay? Appreciate it. Have a good evening, thank you. Okay, so are we gonna, um?
There's somebody else who's.
Mr. West, is, is, you, you asked, you asked your question, it was answered, right? Brittany, why, why is it that on my screen anyway? He remains here. Is there a reason or?
Everybody remains here, Dave.
No, no, not on my, now it's fine. No, they don't. Only when someone's promoted to ask a question or to speak.
Helen Mouch is there, Susan Milstein is there, whoever Susan Zearing is. David Keys is there. All of these are people from, who spoke, who is Susan Zearing? Since she's showing up too.
That's from another application, I think.
Zearing is, uh, the next application.
Okay.
Okay, I guess my, the way I have mine set up is only when someone speaks or is up, um, and then, so I apologize if on the, and you get another, some, some other day. So, are we want to close this subject to the receipt of the calculations and submissions with regard to the same?
Mr. Chairman, would you, would you also like us to resubmit with the removal of the privacy walls, which will, um, decrease those calculations as well? Since it, since it appears that there's, there's no more support for them and our client's willing to remove them?
Sure, I guess so. If, as long as it's, it's just a submission on that and the other submission for the calculations, those two items.
Correct.
Is that agreeable to the board? Just go to, Ryder? Brian?
Yes.
Robin?
Yeah, that's okay.
Alright, so that's the thing. We're closed, subject to receipt of those and substantive comments on those, which comments would say would be within ten days after receipt. I assume, and we would also ask that we receive these by, any submissions by, we should put a date on this, May one, is that alright?
If the hearing is May, whatever, that's a lot too late. We need to get it sooner. All of this stuff has been coming in much too late.
Two weeks. Prior to the meeting date, so May fifth is the next meeting and it's two weeks prior.
So that's what we needed.
Okay, and what date is two weeks from before today? Today is the seventh, that's the twenty-first. Three times seven.
No, two, yeah, it's, um, April twenty-first. It will be due. Thank you.
Alright, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Do you want a good evening, everybody? Alright, the next matter on is, um, application zero three, special permit twenty-two, regarding two thirteen Hall State Avenue, is the applicant here?
Susan, just so you know, I have to remove you. Don't touch anything else because you keep, you're not, your application's not ready yet, so I'm removing you. Just don't touch anything.
Brittany, is the applicant here on this next one?
I'm promoting everybody. Just take some.
Oh, I'm sure, okay, fine.
Okay, Mark, you should be on. Everybody's promoted.
Hello.
Hello.
Okay, good evening.
Good evening.
Okay. Sorry about us, we are running late, so let's proceed with your application, please, if you want to identify yourself, please.
So my name is Mark Texer, this is my, uh.
Brienne Myers. Hello. Thank you for seeing us.
Okay. And you want to review your application at all? You have any?
We do, yeah, so we're, uh.
This is the time to do it.
We're, we're bringing you the, uh, one of the best restaurants in Marinerick. I, I hope, and, uh, we want you guys to approve our, our applicant.
And, um, go ahead, for the record.
You had a, this restaurant would have had a special permit before, um, the prior special permit. I didn't see a copy of that prior special permit, whatever the conditions were, um, in the, in the file, and if it's not there, can we get it, please?
So it, it was a restaurant before us, um, this is our first restaurant in, in, uh, Westchester. We were both, uh, in the city before this. Um, so we came up here, uh, and we leased the restaurant. Um, so it was a restaurant, uh, it's a Lars Carbida on, uh, two thirteen Hall State Avenue, right across from the train station. Um, was a restaurant. Um, again, we don't think that there is any impacts, um, that is going to be had negatively on the, on the space. And, uh, we're not making any structural changes to it. Or any kind of, uh, changes that require any kind of special permits. So, uh, we're just looking to get the permit to go ahead and, and open.
Okay, Brian, I think, did you have any comments on this?
Yeah, I, I, I did.
Person to look at this.
Just trying to, just trying to go through the, uh, the application itself, um. Who is Deepak Properties?
Deepak Properties is the owner of the building.
Okay, so they're the owner of the building. Uh, and you are going to be the tenant, correct?
Yes.
Okay. Uh, and that's, that's you personally, or I, or is it in L, in an LLC or?
So the name, the, the name of the company is Augustine's Lumbraya LLC.
Okay. So really, the application has to be made out technically, um, in the name of Augustine's.
Brian, they resubmitted. Dave brought that to our attention. We spoke with Charlie. We went over everything. It's, it's now on the agenda. It's, we sent it directly to Dave and Charlie.
Okay, so in following with that, uh, uh, you know, we need a, a, a list of the LLC members along with that. Was that provided?
It's just us.
Just us two.
Okay, well, um, I guess they, you should, you should send that in in writing too, because that's, that's part of the application.
Yeah, I thought that was, I thought that included.
Yep, it is there. It's in the page that was notarized that states who is part of the LLC.
Okay, and was that in our application? That's the one that went to Dave and?
It's reposted on the website. It was the same letter. It was the same memo. It was just notarized that he's the LLC.
Okay, um, the, uh, one of the other things is the, the SEAF, uh, nobody signed off on it, uh, which is just something that, that needs to be done. It doesn't change the, uh, the data on it. I also saw that there's, I don't know why some of these things are still on the books, but there's a couple of open permits that go back to twenty fifteen and one open complaint going back to twenty eleven. I don't know whether or not.
Those have been rectified as well. I've re-added them to the agenda. They were closed out as of yesterday. There's no current open complaint.
Okay, good. Uh, good, I didn't, I didn't revisit this one.
Yeah.
Within the past twenty-four hours, I'm looking at what was submitted to us, uh, before that. So I mean, those are just some of the things that I found in the application, but it sounds like the, the applicant has rectified it.
Sounds good, okay.
I can add to the, uh, short environmental assessment form. This is a type two action under secret, so it's exempt from secret review. Though, although they submitted an EAF, which is helpful, one is, um, not required and shouldn't be considered.
Okay.
I go back to my, what I asked for, and if the applicant can't get it, can you please, Brittany, find it? There was previous, there was, since there was a restaurant here previously, it would have had a special permit. If this one needs a special permit, that one would have needed it. And therefore, can we get a copy of any prior special permit? Because very often there are conditions of something that was an issue at some point, so can we please get copies of the prior, um, special permit resolutions for this site?
Okay, I'll put in our cross for those, thank you.
Yeah, we did, uh. Good evening, everybody, Pat Costabile, I work with the engineer. Um. We did put in a request for all documents and the documents that were returned to us did not have any of. Uh, previous special permit things issued, so uh, we asked the same question, so.
Yeah, well hopefully one of us can get an answer.
Yeah.
Do you anyone here that wants to speak about this application, anyone in the public?
Well, so I have a much more critical question, um, Mr. Tashara, is it a, and I take it it's an Italian restaurant?
Yes, yes, it is. So, yeah, it's our, it's our first, it's our first restaurant that we owned, uh, we've. Been in the city for twenty years, uh, at the, I was at the Russian tour. Uh, for twenty years, she was at uh, a lot of.
B L T and Loring Place and.
Yeah, uh, so. Our first in uh, in the Westchester, we, we love Marinerick and uh. We want to bring, want to bring you guys.
I was just curious.
I actually have a couple of questions uh, that I hadn't seen here, um, what are your proposed hours of operation?
Uh, it's about eleven to eleven.
Eleven to eleven on. Every day of the week, or?
Uh, proposed, right now, it's uh, Monday through Sunday, yes.
Okay, so it's every day of the week, uh, and are you proposing to ever have any? Live music or amplified music?
No.
No music? Uh, no outdoor seating?
Not right now, no.
I don't actually foresee that in the future as well, um, it's just, it, it's not conducive, it doesn't look like a comfortable. You know, sidewalk atmosphere.
Right. Are you planning, I, I don't know uh, exactly the renovations, but a lot of times restaurants. You know, they do the front wall where it can completely open up, are you planning anything like that, or is it going to be?
Not at all, so the renovations are basically cosmetically. Um. Just, just cosmetic, yeah.
So the restaurant, the, the dining area, everything's going to remain enclosed?
Absolutely, yes.
The currently in place and what we plan to keep, uh, there are two sliding doors at the front of the facade that do open up. Um, to create a bigger space area, we've been using them for deliveries and whatnot.
But not for seating or dining?
Correct, no.
Okay. And you also have, uh, you have an upstairs area in the back, I think I saw on the plans?
No, it's a uh.
We call it the attic. It looks like storage.
No, I saw something specific saying a dining room.
No, it's a bathroom in the back.
Oh, the back room, okay, sorry.
Yes, it's elevated slightly, but not. Elevated to a point where. It's a second floor.
Oh, okay, and there's no dining out back, correct?
No.
Out, outside, so the restaurant's completely contained.
It's completely contained, the same square footage. Everything is basically the same, it's just. We're changing, changing names.
Okay, well, like, like uh. Chairwoman Kramer said, the, or not Chairwoman, I'm sorry. Member Kramer said, uh, you know, we do, we, we should look at the history on this and get uh.
Absolutely, and I. Again, we're super excited to uh, to be here.
Quick question, do you have any takeout business or delivery business contemplated?
We do plan on it, absolutely, um, we've signed up, uh, we're started accounts with Grubhub, um, and Uber Eats. Um, and they will, our deliveries will be outsourced, we won't have. We won't retain delivery people onsite.
Good. Does anyone else have any questions regarding this matter? Board members, members of the public? Okay, um. So at this point, I, I assume you want to retain this open for the information you're waiting for, Robin, or?
Um, I just want to see the, the um, special permit, because I mean, I don't have, I don't necessarily, I think we should just keep it open, as far as I'm concerned, just keep it open to get those copies of the resolution, I don't need it to be kept open for anything else.
Okay. Um. The only thing is if this thing's in that, yeah, I guess, whatever.
I mean, as I recall, and I, it's been, I don't, you know, I don't really remember, I don't think there was substantive issues on this site, but I don't a hundred percent remember, you know, it's too many restaurants in too many years, but I don't recall it.
One way I ask, is there a motion to close subject to? The receipt of the.
Did you ask if anybody else wanted to speak, Dave?
I, I did, I did.
Um, I, I'll move to close subject to receiving copies of the, of the resolutions, leave it open to receive copies of the, of, of prior resolutions.
And I can second that.
Okay. Okay, Greta?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Robin? All right, the hearing is closed, thank you.
Good luck.
Thank you for your time.
Yeah. Next hearing is application. When? Just want to make a note of the subject to. Acquire. Resolution, okay. The next is number two on the new hearings, that's the application zero four A V twenty two, seven hundred South Barry. The applicant here. This is a special permit. No, this is um. A renewal of the special permit. Is the applicant here?
Promoted, he's just getting settled, I think. Adam, do you want me to promote Conrad as well as he's part of your team?
Yes, can you hear me at this point?
Yes.
Okay, and.
Evening.
Good evening, how are you? Let me try to get my video on as well.
Okay, there you go.
Didn't succeed. There we go, I apologize, uh, I'm Adam Weckstein from the law firm of Hakerman Tortorillo, I'm Weckstein, I'm representing the applicant, um, Marinerick. Beach and Yacht Club and Spa Inc. Uh, which is the not profile, per profit entity that operates the club. We are here to renew a special permit, which your board granted in July of two thousand nineteen. To allow non-member events, it was the. First of the special permits granted to this applicant, they're actually for the prior operator, owner of the club. There were three additional ones that had previously been granted for non-member events. We are not, as part of our request, seeking to change our operations in any way, we are not. As part of our request. Seeking to make any improvements or changes on site that relate to non-member events. At this point, I know how short for time you are, so what I would like to do is number one, have Conrad Roncotti, who's the president of the club. Take you briefly through. What's been going on as far as member and non-member events over the last few years? And then both he and I will be available to answer questions or address concerns that the board may have, if there are any issues we wish to discuss, we're happy to do that.
Okay, so you're going to address changes that since the last resolutions, changes of operation?
Well, I don't think. But I will let.
With a renewal of one, I just don't want, we've been through this, so this is a renewal application right now, that's all this is, right?
That is all this is.
Go ahead.
Conrad, you just want to briefly describe the events that have happened?
Yes, uh, good evening, everyone, um. We have, uh, we're seeking renewal, of course, as uh, Mr. Weckstein states, uh, we received our first. Uh, permit in two thousand nineteen, which as Mr. Weckstein mentioned was a continuation of uh, prior history under prior ownership. I'm Conrad Roncotti, I'm the president of the club, uh, we have submitted all the required requisite paperwork. Uh, to the village, we've submitted our nine ninety forms annually, um, I've been in touch with Mr. Tavolachi. Uh, who asked me to resend everything so that they were readily available to him and whoever else inquired, I did so about a month ago. Um, and we've submitted for two thousand nineteen. Two thousand um. Twenty. And we also have this evening, uh, Mr. Weckstein has asked me to uh, provide the amount. Of member and non-member events, we are fully aware and comply with the twenty percent non-member to member. Uh, event limitations, in two thousand nineteen, we had sixteen non-member events, seventy member events. Uh, that's eighteen point six percent, so we're under the twenty. In twenty twenty, it was a COVID year, we had three uh, non-member events. Twenty four member events, that was about eleven percent on the calculation, and in twenty twenty one, uh, business approved. Uh, improved a little bit, um, with COVID abating, we had ten non-member events, fifty four. Member events, uh, that is fifteen point uh, six percent. Uh, certainly, twenty twenty one is partially within our current cycle, or we're tracking well below uh. Twenty percent events, and uh, we can certainly uh, provide that information. Tabulated if requested at the end of the year, uh, and when we submit our, our next set of uh, applications.
Okay, thank you.
If I just said that quickly, I know the board is busy, uh, there's been no substantive change to the operation of the club. Uh, things continue, there's been a significant amount of investment uh, in the club, it continues to improve, we're, we're very happy to be a part of that. Uh, we provide this uh, for the, for the general community at large. I'll be answering the questions.
Yeah, have you, have you?
In a letter of any? I'm sorry, go.
Have you gotten any violations for going beyond? Uh, the bounds of your special permit in terms of having? Uh, events, non-member events, uh, music, uh, amplified music going beyond the, the timeframe?
No. And there's been uh, no other violations that, that haven't been cured with respect to pure building department. Uh, issues, uh, we had a fire inspection yesterday, for example, all went well, uh, we're in constant communication with the building department. Um, I would say. Every few weeks, uh, if not more, we're undergoing a full renovation right now, so we're constantly in communication with the building department. Yes.
Is someone else who had their hand raised? Okay, um. Were you aware? A letter from um. I want the applicant to be aware, are you aware of a letter that we received from? Carrera from a neighbor dated April five?
Something that Mr. Weckstein sent to me today.
No, did Mr. Weckstein, did you, are you aware of such a letter? I guess the answer is yes.
The Newman Ferrari letter, yes, I. April fifth, yes.
Okay, thank you, I just want to make sure you had it, that's all.
We do, and I'm happy if, if the board wants me to address any of the issues raised. Um.
Oh, you make those decisions, okay, um, well, respect you, you on that one, all right, is there um? Oh, the, the.
I have a couple of questions.
Sure.
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah, I mean, you said you have filed the forms nine ninety, um, to look at the, the um. Resolution that we. We had, um, we asked for forms nine ninety and nine, nine ninety T. Two different types of forms required.
So our accountant files uh, everything, he filed a nine ninety N. In two thousand eighteen, and he files nine nineties each year. That's what the IRS requires, we're a five oh one C seven.
Well, one of the conditions was a form nine ninety and a form nine ninety T. Uh, it would be, I think, helpful to go through the conditions. In our special permit and to provide evidence that you've complied with all those conditions.
Well, let's see if there are any are an issue, which ones do you want to run through them all quickly?
Yeah, um.
So that's the applicant comply with all requirements. I don't know, the first one is what, three forty two fifty nine, I don't thirty five?
I can affirm compliance with all of these things, um, no more than twenty percent of the events we just went through. We filed the nine nineties, which are all that's required of us, they can't file a format. Yeah, that is, it's not applicable to a five oh one C seven.
Right. Greta, it's a nine ninety N was filed one year, um, I don't know what else was filed.
The permit, the permit requires a nine ninety T.
It doesn't apply, it's not applicable into the IRS rules.
So you didn't file a nine ninety T?
Where it's, I think it would be illegal to file a nine ninety T if it's not applicable to our. Some chapter seven organization, we're fully compliant with every IRS filing.
You, did you, you filed a nine ninety form though, correct?
Yes, sir, absolutely, and twice have sent it to the village. We've never had a non-member event commence before eight A M, we've never had a non-member event go. Um, after, continue after twelve A M. Uh, during the week or after two A M. On a Friday or Saturday, we don't have outdoor music, we don't have, uh, we haven't had any outdoor amplified music uh, in two years, maybe three. And I actually don't recall ever having outdoor amplified music, we don't have an outdoor speaker system of any kind installed. And we don't have outdoor amplified, uh, we're not. Um, none of the events this year, for example, have outdoor amplified music.
Can I ask you a question about that, um, do you have open windows? I mean, you must have indoor amplification. We have. So are there open windows in the facility?
The only time, we don't have open windows, we have all fixed windows, we do of course have doors, um, during COVID. Um. In twenty twenty and twenty twenty one, there were events where doors were kept open for safety purposes. Under COVID, we had a uh, uh, prom, I believe the school is Holy Child. So, uh, you know, young girls having a prom, all-girls school, and the doors were left open um, for COVID reasons, yes.
Could that happen, uh, do, if you recollect, was that somewhere around the end of May in twenty one?
Yes. May twentieth, I saw the, the, we did get another correspondence last week. Uh, being proactive, I, and responsible, I went back and looked at the date. It was an event on May twentieth, it was the Holy Child prom, and we do recall that the doors were, were left open because of COVID, but that's an unusual circumstance.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Anything else on this?
In, on your application, on number six, um, there was a question about um. I, violations.
Yeah.
Who indicated two violations had been issued, but you didn't give any information as to what they were about, except saying that they were not. You know, they didn't apply, but I think that's for us to decide. Whether they apply or not.
I can, I can take you through that very quickly.
Absolutely, no problem.
One was for, from the day after you last granted your special permit. And it said there was work going on, on the seawall and a roof. That had not been properly permitted, it was closed. Again, there was, I believe, your permit was the eleventh of two thousand, July eleventh, two thousand nineteen, that was July twelfth. The, the other one was from over a year ago, and it was apparently machine operating, doing some clearing before eight A M. On one day, and that has been closed as well. So those were the two violations.
And the seawall and roof for emergency uh, work, and then we had that um. Inspected, we filed a permit uh, on the roof, and all those violations have been uh, rescinded or closed, I guess, by the building department. We've been very, very diligent about um, dealing with that, in fact, a year ago, Frank Tavolachi called and said that there were older. Outstanding uh, permits that had never been closed out from ten and fifteen years ago. Before our tenure there, and we spent a lot of time. And we spent a lot of time reviewing each of those, doing field visits, site visits, and closing all those out also, even though they had nothing to do with us, to clean up the village files.
Mr. Kobern Cadi, one of the letters from a neighbor says that you had outdoor amplification on October 23rd of last year.
October 23rd was a, our mitzvah. We do not have, we did not have outdoor amplification. I think it was the same condition, man, which it was COVID. There were young children, we left the doors open at their request. Thought it was a responsible thing to do. It's not our policy to disturb our neighbors. It's certainly not our policy to have loud music emanating from the property. We're very conscious of that. We've never been issued a violation by the town. We've never been issued a noise violation by the town. And, and we diligently monitor everything. It was, it's, I admit, the doors were probably left open at a couple of events. But we, we don't have outdoor music, we don't have outdoor bands. We don't have outdoor music systems installed. And I, and I would submit that it was very, very particular circumstances with COVID that we left the doors open and, and would ask that our neighbors understand historically that was an issue.
Was that a, a non-member event?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, so the, the, most of our non-member events are schools, proms, teachers, associations, the Mamaronek Police Department, the Mamaronek Fire Department. Those are our, mostly are, are non-member events or not other nonprofit organizations.
Any other, and if anyone here wants to speak to this?
Yes, there are some people raising their hand.
Okay, let's go.
Would I ever like to begin?
Yeah.
Hi, my name is Randolph McLaughlin, I'm with the firm Newman Ferrara. I'm here with Beverly Sherrod, who is the president of the Shore Acres Property Owners Association, Sapoa. The chair has already referenced a letter that was sent by my firm authored by Deborah Cohen to Mr. Weckstein on, on April 5th, the same day was forwarded to the board. As we said in the letter, we, we've had a good relationship with the applicant.
The letter that we have, the letter I have on April 5th, just so we can be clear, is not a letter, a copy of a letter to the other, to the applicant. It's a letter to the board.
Yes, yes, sir, that, that's exactly right. The letter, the letter I'm referring to is the letter that Ms. Cohen sent to the board with a CC to Mr. Weckstein. That's all I'm suggesting to you. I'm in the, and I know we, you've had a long meeting, you've got much, many more items, so I'm not going to belabor the point with you today. But we've listed four items that we believe the board needs to have answers to, questions raised in those four items.
Right. How does the lawsuit that you referred to in your first item have anything to do with this board's jurisdiction? I don't know what the lawsuit's about.
Well, it, it.
No, is it relevant to this board's determination?
It's, it's relevant in this sense, Mr. Chairman, and if I may. It's relevant in this sense that Mr. Moncotti is here as the president of the board of that entity. But it's my understanding that there's litigation challenging his status with the, at least there's litigation pending. I'm not a party to the litigation. If he can assure us that it has nothing to do with his status as president and he's going to continue in that role, then, then that's fine. I can put.
Just one minute, everybody. Excuse me, everybody, bring it down.
I apologize.
No, 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 I'm not, okay, just a second.
I have a.
May I just chair the meeting, Rob? Thank you, okay.
Okay.
I'll take a hike, okay. So let me explain. This letter is about litigation that you don't know anything about, or you don't know. It challenges someone's status. I don't really care about that unless you can show us a court order saying that this person is lying to us and is misrepresenting himself for herself. I don't understand that. I'm not getting involved in sideshows of matrimonials or other actions of any type. This has nothing to do with us. I don't need, you're asking this board in your letter to clarify how the resolution of the lawsuit is. I have no idea, and that's not our function. We're not here on that. Your second matter is, during the expendency, you say that concerns were brought to the village manager. And you want us to get a full report from the appropriate village representative. I, I don't know what that, if, if we don't, if you knew of that, you can get it to us, we look at it. We don't ask for reports from the boards from other villages. If there is something, you could bring it to us. You have, I'll let you go on in a minute. The last is, they can need for continued monitoring of a sewer pipe. I, I have no idea what that has to do with us, but you can talk to that because you think it relates to the use of the premises. And then you say, the applicant is, you want us to confirm, okay, he's talked to the 990. Okay, so why don't you go ahead, but please state a point on this. I'm not interested in other lawsuits, and you, there's a stipulation attached to this, which has got to do with a briefing schedule for motions, which has nothing to do with us. It's just, I mean, it's just throwing something at us that meaning, it's meaningless to me. That's my understanding. Other board members may differ, in which case I'd ask them to speak, please. And I didn't mean to interrupt you, Robin, but go ahead. Nope.
I, I believe Robin has floor, Ms. Kramer has floor, I don't want to interrupt her.
I'll let you continue.
Thank you. Our, our, our requests are very straightforward and very simple. First, we're not suggesting that Mr. Moncotti is doing anything inappropriate or lying to the board.
Let's just move on, move on to the second one, let's leave that point alone. I don't want to hear that, maybe the other members do, I'm not interested in a lawsuit, I don't think about it, I'm sorry.
With respect to the second point, it's my understanding that complaints have been made about noise issues and other.
What is your understanding about those complaints? Who made them, when were they made, and what are they? I mean, they're relevant, but just to tell me complaints have been made, we should go and get a village report.
The president of our board, Ms. Sherrod, is here. I believe she may be able to address that issue for you.
Okay, for you, okay.
I am promoting her now.
Well, why don't we finish the letter, sir, so you can go. Anything else you want to add, sir, before we?
Well, about the Otter Creek issue, if I can. That issue is a very simple issue. As you may know, the Otter Creek, the sewer pipe has had a lot of issues over the years. And we remain concerned about whether or not that sewer pipe has been adequately repaired and whether it functions. Because if you're having these events, you're going to have increased sewage and those kinds of issues.
To your knowledge, sir, does that sewer pipe at the present time inoperative or not working properly?
I'm not an engineer, I don't know if it is or isn't, I'm asking.
That's all. Well, I think that's asking to prove a negative to a degree, I mean, but I understand your point, well taken, and thank you.
And the second, the final point, if I, the final point is, Mr. Moncotti has given us information today. I'm not sure it's contained in the 990s or in some other documents that he has. So I've only asked that whatever documents, financial or otherwise, that he's, that he has that shows the ratio of non-member events and member events, that that be provided to the board. That's all we're asking about that.
Thank you very much, sir.
Ms. Sherrod may have some issues on the, to identify for the noise complaints.
Thank you.
Hello.
Good evening.
Okay, thank you. I'm Beverly Sherrod, and I am president of the Shore Acres Property Owners Association. I have been, first, I want to say that in 2019, we signed a memorandum of understanding with the new owners of the club. And we still, you know, it, it was based on trust, and we still hope that we are going to be having a very amicable relationship. There are things we don't have answers to. We have had complaints, I have had complaints about noise from the club. I understand police were called. I don't have the police spotted, so I don't know where the, the records are, but that presumably could be produced. It may be the times that Mr. Rancotti was just referencing.
Were you witness to any of the events in question that you thought were, you heard that may have been the subject of complaints?
I, I mean, I'm sorry, I didn't hear the first part of your question.
Were you witness to any of the events regarding the subject?
No, I wasn't, I live a block away, it's quieter where I am. It's mainly the people who live along Alder Road who have the trouble, they're right across the creek. Um, I, I, to go back to the sewer line, when they received their sort of temporary permission to go forward from the planning board in 2019, Mr. Rancotti made the point that he couldn't repair the sewer line until he knew what his approved site plan would be. And they were supposed to return with their site plan in 2019, before the pandemic started, which I don't believe they ever did. So I don't think the sewer line's ever been repaired, because they don't have an approved plan. They, meanwhile, though, have apparently, according to this lawsuit that we've seen between the partners, invested millions of dollars in construction without an approved site plan, and we're concerned about that. I don't know that that's a zoning issue, but it's certainly a village issue that we're concerned about.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Is there anything else you wanted to add? I'm sorry, I didn't mean to cut you off at all. Sounds that way on Zoom, because like.
No, I know, I know, we've all been coping Zoom. I, I have a question, perhaps Mr. Rancotti can answer it now, but we have seen the filings between him and Mr. Shallow, who we were told were, were partnership, in partnership together, and now they seem to be suing each other as to who's in charge. We don't know who's in charge, we don't know who we're negotiating with, or asking for this information, actually.
So you're, you're asking who at the, who is in charge of?
Yeah, who, we don't, there is.
He's the president, I believe.
He's the president, but I believe that Mr. Shallow is the person who is actually on site managing it. And he has been in New Jersey, so, and they're on opposite sides of this lawsuit.
Okay, that's the topic of a lawsuit, I think, if there's a question here, do we know of an individual who is in charge of the premises?
Yes, I am.
Thank you, okay, and you're the applicant, very good.
Yes, and where I live, and if I live in New Jersey or California, it doesn't matter.
Thank you very much, you answered the question, really.
I was answering Ms. Sherrod, my apologies.
Okay.
If I may, sir.
Remember, have any questions regarding this?
I'm sorry?
I was asking the board if they have any questions.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Okay, do any members of the public have any questions?
Sir, may I?
How about if you had members of the board with questions? So, um, I have a question for Ms. Sherrod.
Say that, I said, that was.
And then you immediately went into the public, so I didn't have a chance to, to say.
I apologize. Do any members of the board have any question?
So Ms. Sherrod, I have a question for you. Because I'm a little confused by this, this petition. And I don't know if it was run by Sapoa or just brought by neighbors, but we got a copy of a petition. And it's a little perplexing, because some of the people signed last year, so it was a year before the 2022 renewal. Some of the people signed many, many, so the point is, why was this, this, this petition prepared? And who was it prepared for, and why was it prepared?
I have to say that I, I don't know anything about it.
Robin, Robin, if that's the Bleecker Avenue?
That's across the water.
That's across the water.
I, I, okay, I, I just didn't, so, so the question I still have, so is there someone here from Bleecker, from that proper, from those, that petition?
Yes. Yes, there is, can you hear me?
Yes.
I don't, can you hear me?
Yes.
Oh, yeah, this is, I'm Claire Zelenka, I'm from 490 Bleecker, across the water, and I, I am one of the people who signed that petition. And we signed it, we brought that petition together because the noise is quite unbearable at times. I called the police in October of 2019. There was a bar mitzvah going on at the club, and it was so loud. I could tell you the name of every relative that was in attendance at that bar mitzvah. I could tell you everything that was going on. It was so loud, I don't, I couldn't understand how the people attending the bar mitzvah could even talk to each other. But anyway, um, I don't know if the, if the windows were open or closed on that night. The decibel level was just incredible. And that has been a continuing problem, that the, the noise level is just, um, it's something you wouldn't expect to experience living in the village of Mamaronek. I talked to one of the police officers, I said, you know what? I know it's 10 o'clock on a Saturday night. He said, it's 10 o'clock on a Saturday night. I said, yeah, but this isn't Third Avenue in Manhattan. This is the village of Mamaronek. I don't expect to be having this disco music blasted, it, it blasted. Anyway, I'm, I'm going on and on, I'm kind of tired too, and I'm getting over a bad cold. But, um, we are very concerned about the fact that the special permit allows for amplified music until 12 o'clock, I believe, even on a Sunday. It's just way too late, it, it's, it's way too late, it's way too disturbing. I don't know if anybody else is on the meeting from 490 Bleecker, but I know my whole neighborhood that surrounds this building, it is, it is a problem for us. And we would like that to be addressed. Did, did you have any other questions about the petition?
Yeah, I have, this, this is a real question that I was perplexed by. You started to prepare this in May 2021. You said you had problems in September, October of 2019. So why did you start to prepare this in 2021 relating to a 2022 renewal? I'm a little perplexed by why you did this a year ago for something, where you were just doing it in advance and not submitting it, or?
I didn't, I didn't, I didn't, I personally did not prepare the petition, I signed it. I, I had nothing to do with the preparation, preparation of the petition. But I did call the police in 2019 in October.
So we don't know the answer to my question, okay, that's fine.
Right, and I have, I have tried to call, I even tried to call the club to say, you know what, would it, would you mind like turning the music down? Could the DJ just lower the music? And there was no, no one answered the phone call. I was even tempted on occasion to drive over there and say, is there any way you could just turn it down? But no, I didn't prepare the petition, so I can't answer those questions.
Okay, thank you very much.
What's the frequency of the problem? You know, you've, you described very specifically some situations that certainly were, you know, sounding very loud and disturbing, but how often does it happen? Can you, can you give us some?
Well, it was clearly, it clearly not as often because of COVID. So I, I can't really give you an accurate answer right now, because COVID kind of changed everything. But in 2019, it was enough for me to want to drive over there and knock on the door and say, could you turn the music down? So was it at least, uh, maybe once or twice a month?
Once, once or twice a month? I mean, you said you went, you called them once. So was it once or twice a month, or was it once? I'm, I'm sorry, I'm trying to.
You know what, it was in 2019, it was in 2019, and I bear, and I don't remember exactly. And this all just came to a head now because the special permit, there's being an application for it to be renewed, and specifically in the special permit is something allowing for noise amplification, which I'm kind of incredulous about.
Any other questions, any board members have?
Mr. Chairman, it's Conrad Rancotti with your permission, I'd like to clear up a prior comment I made. I think it was Mr. Gladstein asked me a question. The bat mitzvah from last fall was actually a member event. was actually a member event. I received the text of somebody who's listening and it was a member event where we had the doors open due to COVID. Also, I would like to point out that, again, that we do not have any exterior amplified music in the past three years.
All right.
And I, I just find that shocking. I guess you really don't need it. Because whatever, whatever system you have in place now, with all due respect, is, is very, very loud.
And I'm, I'm happy to be with.
Excuse me, excuse me.
Yes, sir, I'm sorry.
Not for people to have a dialogue with each other. If you'd like to, you can, you need to arrange to meet and speak on your own. Okay. Are there any, are there, no, not one thing.
One last thing, sir.
I'm, I'm gonna ask you again.
I'm sorry.
Next time, we'll just skip to the next hearing. Then you can be, and I'm sorry, this is, we have an evening here.
Yes, sir.
Okay, now. Are there any board members that have any questions at this point?
I don't have additional questions, but I think it would be important to have the backup of the member versus non-member events.
Okay. That's something we can, okay, would you like to request that?
I just provided those numbers, sir.
Mr. Applicant, I'm gonna have to ask you, please. You're gonna have to talk to your counsel, but please, I can't have this, okay? It's just not gonna be, the next time, we just go to the end of the meeting. That's the end of it. It's not gonna happen tonight. I'm sorry, Greta, do you want to get those for the next meeting? Is that what you?
In writing.
In writing.
In backup.
Okay, fine. This isn't, the permit doesn't end for a while, does it? No.
We're July 11.
Yeah, July, okay.
And David. It would be good to get the dates of the non-member events that were held over the past three years, just to see whether or not these complaints correspond, because I don't believe there are the same restrictions on the, on the member events. So.
Right. The dates, and you want the dates and the number, et cetera. Okay. Anything else any board member wants? Anyone here from the public want anything? Have any questions?
Yes, I have one question, please.
Well, your name, please.
My name is John Betley. I live on Shore Acres Drive. I actually have two quick questions. One, and I apologize, I didn't get opportunity to read the special permit. So my first question is, are they, is Mamarone Beach and Yacht capped at the number of events that they can have during the year? So, you know, if they wanted to, they could have 365 events throughout the year. That's my first question. And the second question is, I believe there's a patio off of the main dining room. So even though the amplified, amplified music is indoors, are people allowed on the patio until 2:00 AM? Because if, you know, if there's 100 guests on the patio talking, that, that could be very loud. And I think that, that causes a lot of the, the noise complaints, the noise that everybody hears.
Okay, I don't know. Well, if the applicant wants to speak to that, you can.
Adam? I don't know what the practice is, but when they, certainly when they're member events, there's no, no restriction like that. Certainly, the number of events is, it's a permitted principal use. It's not subject to the special permits. So there's no absolute limitation, nor would there be a limitation on people talking outside on a patio would be, as could be the case in any club. I mean, for better or for worse. This is on to be a country club. It's not as if there's a single family residence here. It will have certain characteristics.
Yeah, because I, I'm just bringing this up because I know Shore Acres Club, our special permit, that we're not allowed to be outdoors on the patio past 9:00 PM. And we, you know, we strive to, you know, stick to that rule. So that's why I'm curious to see if you, if, if Mamarone Beach and Yacht, people are allowed on the patio out till 2:00 AM. So it seems like you guys, that they, they're allowed.
I, I, I don't have the permit in front of me. It's the same one. We'll look at it for the next time if you want. The, it has the hours. It's to 12:00 AM. Non-member event on a Friday or Sunday, they continue only, no outdoor music, fire. All right, I'll take a look at it later on, but it is what it is. Each one is different on its face, but it will depend on what happened. Believe that there were some significant differences, but be that as it may. Bring that up at the next time. We're not gonna close this today. Is there anyone else who wants to speak on this? So based on what we want now, and the, the factors in particular, those that you mentioned, we're gonna adjourn this, I assume, and I'll come back with that information. Is that the general consensus of the board? Robin, Brian?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. And we'll do that. Okay. Thank you very much, Madam Stan.
Thank you. Thank you for your patience.
Thank you.
All right, the next matter is 1304 Raleigh Road. This is an application. Okay, oh, this is the application for an area variance to put in a generator. Where there's a required, your yard of 25, 16.2. All right, we have the application on that is the applicant here.
He is.
Good evening. How are you?
Good. How are you doing?
All right, thank you. You want to just briefly explain, or we have your paperwork here, but if you want to just, is there anything you want to tell us about this?
All right, uh, looking to install a, a generator. I'm on a corner lot. The setback is 16 and a half feet. And it's the only place that the generator can go. So I'm looking for variance.
Brian, you took a look at this. Did you have any questions or comments on this, for the applicant?
Uh, yeah, I, just to, just to give a little bit more background, I did do a site visit to the property. It is a corner lot. It was built, and I believe it's probably a pre-existing non-conforming, because it's supposed to be, I think I read somewhere, 25 foot setback, but there's only 19 feet to the property line as I measured. Where they want to put the generator is proximate to fire services around the four corners of the house. It's the only area which is not either under a window or next to a bedroom or next to a neighbor's bedroom. The closest neighbor is on a different elevation and is a complete floor higher. Their first floor is about the roof level of this house. So, and they also have some paver steps coming out from, from the actual building, which extend further to the property line than what they're asking for, for this generator. So, you know, that's, that's basically the conditions on site. It is close to the electrical panel where the electric comes into, into the building. And, you know, those are, those are the conditions that I observed.
Any board member have any questions regarding this?
Um, you know, I noticed that this applicant has a survey from 2014. It has been the policy of the board, and we have frequently in the past asked for surveys that were more recent. And in fact, it's written as part of the application. This is not the only application we received this week that has an old survey, but it's a requirement that you have a survey dated within one year. This wasn't even updated. 2014 was a long time ago. It's eight years ago. Lots of things could have changed. This, the survey doesn't have dimensions on it, doesn't have the rear yard dimensions. It's pretty informativeless. And we, I don't think we have the information we need. I, I probably would vote for this. I don't have a problem. I think, you know, you can't put generators necessarily in a lot of place. But I have a problem with, with getting these kinds of applications that don't comply with our requirements and are missing so much information.
Okay, well, I think what we're saying is we need a new, updated survey on this. The only thing is, the only, the only, the only setback I don't see on here is really the rear yard, correct?
Yeah, and that's the one that's relevant.
And, you know, while it does not change the fact that obviously having a professional survey is more determinative, I did notice that. And I did physically measure from the house to the fence, which is the property line, which is 19 feet.
Okay. All right, well, I think we should probably.
We don't have any photographs either, David.
Yeah.
What's, what's difficult about this is really, there was a lot of information that we did not have.
Well, I think we should.
What type of photographs, though? Because I, I, there was Google aerial. We had photos of where they're, just to clarify, so I can explain to the applicant.
I think so. It shows the how, the, the house around and the area where the generator is going to be flipped.
Right.
We have, right. So what's, what pictures in addition would they need?
Um, where is that? That wasn't in.
It was.
There's one, there's one photo, yes.
Yeah, there is one.
No, there's, there's a couple. There's, there's an aerial, aerial showing that it's a corner property.
And they're posted on the website.
Yeah, see, this is, this is complicated, difficult for us to understand. I mean, I, we got a package. The package had certain information. My assumption is when I get the package, that that is complete except for later information. But then I need to know that there's later information submitted.
There wasn't later information. The packets were sent out complete.
I got this, I got this package weeks ago.
Right. Yeah, and that was all in it. We've checked every one and they're all the same. I don't know something.
The two photos in it.
But yeah, no, you're right. I, I see the photos now. I stand corrected.
I didn't see them at the beginning.
Limited photo. It's not a photo of the full backyard, you know? I didn't really have a sense of what the options were, you know, from, from the submissions.
So more of someone standing back more to see all the locations possible for the generator?
Yeah.
There really aren't any options. This is the only place that it can go. Otherwise, it's under bedroom windows or under.
Okay, well, we're gonna have to get a survey anyway. So why don't we do this? Since it's not an extra trip and get in the survey and some photographs of the, the area. Would that be to everyone satisfaction then? Because I was, you have to come back on the survey anyway. I, I really concur with Robin on that.
Just so the applicant understands, though, we've looked through the property file. There is no updated survey, so the applicant would have to get a
Yes, that's.
Survey to come out to the property, just so you understand, Susan. It would have to be an updated survey by a surveyor, licensed surveyor.
Right, yeah.
And going to one other thing, I know, Brian, you said that the rear yard now is 19 feet. The objection from the building department said the rear yard required 25 feet, doesn't say what the existing is. And it says the proposed is 16.2. That would mean the generator is, if you're right, 2.8 feet. Is that the size of the generator?
So it's a 20, it's a 22 kilowatt generator. I did not, I, I believe in our packet, they might have.
There is a mention here, it's 25.
Yeah.
It's what?
25 inches wide.
Right, and it's, it's similar to the last one that we had approved. So although it's only about two feet wide, you're not, you know, you're gonna want a distance from the house. So the three and a half feet that they're asking for is reasonable.
Yeah, but I think the question is, is, I think we do need to get an updated survey. They'll usually just update and revise it as.
And show us that dimension on the survey, please, the, the rear yard, which is the one that is.
Okay. All right, so why don't we do this? We'll put it over for next month, just on those two items, the photograph.
No, I have a, I have a couple of other things that I noticed.
I'm sorry, go on, man.
I'm sorry. The parcel history, it looks like, I don't know whether this thing, whether this thing is open or not. It said, you know, it's kind of hard to, you know, you have issued and closed, but it looks like there's a Sanitaseer compliance certificate that was issued. It doesn't say closed. I don't know if it needs to say closed, but these other.
Now, their issue does not mean open. If it would say open, if there were any open violations, and I confirm that there weren't any.
Okay, okay. Then that's, that's good.
The way our parcel history shows.
Okay, that's great. Then on the,
Well, actually, oh, actually.
On the E I, the EAF, number nine, is it number nine? No, number 10, excuse me.
10 is the water supply.
Yeah, I had circled. Oh, number, number five is, number five is incorrect. It's, is this proposed action a permitted use? You had
Right.
Said no, it should be.
5A. 5, 5A. I, I noticed that as well. 5A.
It's, it's, the use is what you're referring to. I mean, it is a permitted use.
Yeah, it's, it's permitted.
Type, type two. We don't really have any authority to review any environmental, so I'm not sure that that's relevant to any.
It's just correcting the record.
Right. And I was, and I was gonna ask Charlie about that as well, because that's basically what happened with one of the other applicants, that they're not subject to it.
But doesn't, the type two shows that, right?
Type two action, it's completely exempt from secret, and they don't even have to submit an EAF.
Right, but so the question, Greta's raising the question, since it was submitted, if it's inaccurate, should it be corrected? Thank Greta.
I think since it's there, we should note that it's just incorrect and correct that one. It's because that's accurate. You have a document in there, even if it's the wrong, and had the wrong name on it, you would say, well, at least fix your name on it, but it's not relevant or pertinent, but for identification purposes and just for accuracy.
Or throw it out.
Or, or throw it out. If that's what you want to do.
But I can't, no, I don't know how to do that. Okay, um, so we're gonna hold this open for the two matters, correct?
Yes.
Open for a survey? And open for both.
Now, where do you want the photo, what do you want the photos of?
The area where it's going to be, as well as the, a few pictures of the yard itself, I guess, so people can see that this is the proper and look, location.
And photographs of the other side, because you're saying this is the, or, and Brian is saying this is the only place, not next to a bedroom, but we don't have anything that shows the other windows or anything else. So there's nothing in the record that says that this is the only place.
Right, so, you know, you can take pictures of the four corners of the house and you can mark where a bedroom is, or you can mark where the neighbor's house, where their bedroom is.
All right.
All right. More in agreement on that then? Greta, yes?
Yeah.
Robin, Brian, we're all in agreement?
Yes.
Very good. Yes, Robin?
Yes, yes.
Thank you, thank you, thank you. Okay, next matter. Thank you very much, Matt.
Okay, thank you.
I'll be on for next month. It should be very brief. And actually, that makes the second one on for next month, doesn't it? All right, we have to come and deal with that.
I'll see you.
Okay. The next matter is application 06 AV 22, 243 Madison Street. This is an area variance to construct a new two-family. Okay? And they're proposing three floors instead of two and a half. And if they are home, okay, in excess. There's the applicant here. Good evening. Could you identify yourself, please?
Arthur, you're still muted. You have to unmute yourself.
Okay. I am Arthur Yellen, architect. And I'm representing finally Home Realty LLC for this project. I'd like to give some introductory background to the design procedure process. My intent was not to take it, to have three stories or to to exceed allowable floor area. I viewed the lowest level as a cellar and I, in designing it, I'm used to thinking of cellars as not floor area. If you take the upper two floors, they have allowable floor area and allowable floor area ratio. All side yards are, side, side and front and rear yards are according to the zoning. The intent was to take the parking off the grid to beautify the site. The whole block has parking right in front of the buildings. I looked at the, I tried to. Um, I looked at the, I tried to find an alternate to what was being done across the street and everywhere else, which is the appearance of three stories with a lot of paving and, uh, giving access to a garage. So I, I intended to, uh, leave more landscaping in the front and, uh, everywhere else on site. So there are two parking spaces inside the building. And there, uh, there are no living spaces on that lowest level. They were just entrances to the floors above. So that, that was the intent, uh, not to, uh, take advantage of, uh, not to increase allowable floor area, but to, uh, do other things. Uh, it so happens that it's being considered floor area. And that's, um, I, I would be looking for variants based on the fact that this, uh, property is narrow. It has lots of rock blasting, trying to minimize blasting. And the site has a, uh, pretty steep slope. So the building is raised. Whether or not there's a, a lower level, the building will have to be raised.
And the variances you're seeking, if you could address. Uh, Robin, do you have any questions on this one?
I, I do have some. I'll let him, let the.
Okay, super. Great, thank you.
Oh.
Does the applicant have anything further at this moment? If not, I think, Robin, you can.
Mr. Yellen, Arthur, do you have anything else you want to say right now?
I think that, um, uh, my, uh, client is online. Alicia, do you have anything to add? Okay, so the intent was to increase landscaping and, uh, get rid of the dominance of the car. And try to provide, uh, on a narrow property, try to provide, uh, privacy to the entrances and keep the environment as open and as clear as possible.
Right, and also to provide adequate, um, to, as Arthur said, to, um, to make it such that the first level or that parking area is not livable space, but that it's just parking with, um, entrances to the, to the above floor. So, and to beautify the property.
Um, okay, I have a couple of things. I know that the survey is a couple of years old. It isn't again, within the last year, since twenty nineteen. I don't know if there's been changes in conditions. You're doing a new building. It's almost less, but you know, we do have some, there's some issues with, so we should have an updated survey, something updated for a year, within the past year. So we, ideally, we get that. Um, the other thing I noticed, and this is just again, a very technical is, um, I noticed, um, Alicia, that it says that you're a member of the applicant entity, ownership entity, but just because you're a member of something doesn't mean you're authorized to file this application. So are you a managing member? Are you one of the only two members? What are you? Because nothing in the application says that.
I'm sorry. Yes, I'm a managing member. I'm one of three members and I have a right to, um, file the application.
There was additional paperwork added that was notarized, uh, that Dave had asked for. We sent over and we posted to Novus.
Okay, now, I, I have some questions. I assume, because there's no discussion about, as I didn't see, and obviously it could be there and I could have missed it, about the fact that this must be in the flood zone, I assume, correct?
Yes, it is.
And is that why you're trying to build the, why the second floor is? So the first floor, I don't know if you had, do you meet the required grade? Is your bo- so your bottom floor doesn't have livable space? I assume that complies with FEMA and village requirements in the flood zone?
Um, that is part of the thinking. Uh, I have not, uh, to be honest, analyzed all the requirements of the flood zone, but there were no livable spaces at that lower level.
Can I just, can I just ask, cause I, I, I looked at the property and I looked at your documents. What is the, what is the elevation of, uh, the, the slab or the base, uh, of the garage here?
The, uh, the garage is, um, at twenty-eight feet. That is five feet above. The, the lowest level of the site is at curb level, which is twenty-three feet, and the garage would be five feet above it.
Well, the hundred-year storm is at an elevation of thirteen feet.
Uh, that, uh, the, um, the first floor is, um, thirteen feet above, uh, above the lowest level at grade.
Right, but the, but it seems like your elevations are much higher than flood levels. And I also went past the property. You're, you're seemingly up on a hill. Has this, has this property ever flooded?
Uh, I'm, I'm not aware of, uh, the history of flooding.
Yeah, based on these numbers, I, you know, I, I think the, the S E A F is wrong, uh, on page three. I don't think it's in the hundred-year uh, floodplain. If these are the elevations we're dealing with.
Well, I, I can review that, obviously.
Yeah, and, and that's, that's relevant to Ms. Kramer's, uh, question, because that was a question that I had as well. Are we building this in, in a certain way to get out of the floodplain? So I went past the property. I don't see it.
There's also the rock. We're trying to avoid extreme blasting.
That I, that I can understand.
And we're trying to preserve some, uh, permeable soil.
But the, the specific question here was about flood, uh, and about the, uh, the information you, uh, you provided. And I don't believe it's in the floodplain, the hundred-year floodplain.
Right, I, I will check.
Now, the application says it's three-story. Does your three, does that include the garage? Or is the three-story excluding the garage? And you're looking at the buildings nearby. They all have a ground floor level garage, same, I, you know? I assume you did not design, you did not provide any kind of, um, uh, sort, uh, any elevation from the exterior. You can find an elevation of your proposed, uh, building.
I thought I did.
I didn't see an elevation in the application, um.
Uh, I'm sorry, I don't know how to manipulate Zoom to put it on the screen, but I thought I did provide an elevation.
I don't think, I don't think.
The last sheet, the last sheet.
Look at it now and see.
Right, do, do you have a plan number? Cause Brittany may be able to put it up.
Yeah, tell me what page it is, Arthur, and I can pull it up.
Uh, A four oh one, I believe.
A four oh one?
Yeah.
Yeah, I see A four oh one. That's almost like an internal. I want the exterior. I want to know what, we have nothing that shows us what the outside of this building is going to look like on the property.
Hi.
Which I would like to see. I, I mean, uh, opposing balcony. I mean, it's, it's just a little, this is like an interior elevation showing us what each of the floors, I mean, are they interior stairs? I assume they are.
I, I'm sorry. I thought I had included that.
Robin, did you get A zero zero zero, which is the exterior perspective?
I don't see zero zero zero.
Yeah, that's a sketch of the.
Yeah, it's a sketch. Robin, it's a sketch rendering, you see?
Nope, I don't see it. Actually don't have that at all.
Is it on the?
There is one in here, hang on.
It's there.
That's a section would be the next sheet. Well, uh, sorry.
The drawing that, um, that, um, Brian just showed, what is that labeled as, uh, Brian?
Uh, well, I have it here, A zero zero zero.
Yeah, that's the one I have, yeah.
Exterior perspective, uh, I'm, I'm looking on Novus.
And I don't see, I see it in my hard copies and I didn't see it in my hard copies. And I'm looking now through the Novus and I don't see it on Novus. So maybe mine got, for whatever reason, it's not here, but I don't see it and I didn't see it.
Okay, yeah, I have the, um, that one you, you referred to, Brian. From September five, two thousand nineteen. Okay.
Correct.
The existing building. Yes. Wait, are you talking about Brian, the existing building or the proposed?
No, I'm talking about, uh,
That's the proposed.
This is a, it's, it's a beautiful rendering of the building showing, uh, you know, the, the, the front entrance way in the, in the.
I do not have that.
Deck.
Nope, don't have that at all. Did not see it, don't have it.
So, so this is a hard copy that came in the application, we, you know, in my, in my things. But I, you're right, I do not happen to see it on Novus.
And it isn't in my hard copy. Because when I went to look at the house, I was very perplexed.
The drawings would be earlier.
Uh, we broke them out to organize it, so we have, I have to figure out where it was put it into, but I mean.
Right, but can you, Brittany, can you
Yeah.
make sure it's on Novus or something?
Yeah, it has to be here. I, I've seen that several times. So let me just find out where it may have gotten mixed into.
I wonder if my signature survey.
And I'll tell you what, if you can, if you can find a copy and put it up on the screen, that would be, yeah.
I'm sorry, I'm not good at, uh, Zoom posting.
Notice that's not even listed in the, um, at least on the list of documents that are attached. It wasn't included in that list.
No, no, it was one of the drawings. It was, uh.
I hold on, I.
It was a combined drawing file.
Yeah, I found it on the, um, on the main agenda.
What page is it, Dave?
It's ten, look, well, you want the exterior. That's what we're looking for.
Yes.
The rendering, yeah.
One of the drawings.
The exterior perspective.
If you can scroll down.
Yeah, I'm, I'm not finding it. I'm where, where Brittany is, I mean.
Right, this is where I'm looking at Novus.
Yeah, if you go, page two and three of it. That's where the car, that's its schematic of the, of the cars underneath and the.
Yeah, but I don't, it's not what I'm looking for. I wonder what the building's gonna look like. Get a sense of it.
I understand.
All right, well, I guess whether or not it was submitted, assuming it was submitted, can we please, can it, can, can it be made sure that it's all submitted so that we can, all the rest of us, certainly me, I don't have it. And I haven't seen it, that the rest of us can see it, uh, Brittany. So can you pull, you know, make sure you, you have it? That we have it in the application. So I need to see.
Yeah, and I think the other question we have is what else was there, um? What else is we want from the applicant? Cause I'd rather just identify what we need from the applicant, if he's gonna come back anyway.
Yeah, that's one thing we need.
Okay. And that would, the, the diagram, all right?
Um. So now going back to my question, well, the other question is, is the building three stories because you have a garage in the level, or is it three stories for some other reason?
It's three stories, um, because, uh, we were trying to maximize living space and take the ra- raise the entry. Lift the building off the entry level, get the parking out of the, and get the parking out of the way. Those are the reasons.
Yeah, but.
So it's, it's three levels, including the parking. It's three levels.
Yes, yes.
So it's only, so it's just like the neighboring buildings?
That's right.
Yes, yes. But we're.
Is it higher than the neighboring buildings?
No, it isn't. It's lower.
So you're, you're, if you're, the top of your roof line, whatever the peak of your building is, is lower than the neighboring?
It is. We're allowing only eight-foot-high, uh, floors on the second and third, and only seven feet in the, uh, in the parking level.
Okay.
All right, we're trying to minimize the height.
Yeah, no, no, that's fine. That, that is.
That. You, you do have something, do you have some kind of a stairwell coming up from the roof onto?
We have it, we have a stair from the second floor unit to the roof.
And, uh, how, how high does that go up above the roof of the building?
It's just the bulkhead.
It's just a bulk.
Now, uh, my other question is with respect to F A R. Does your F A R include the garage? I, I, because it's so big, is it included in F A R calculation?
The F A R uh, just the second and third floor would be point six six, less than the point seven allowed. If I include the, uh, lowest level is point eight five.
So the F A R, the reason, you need the variance because the, you're counting the garage as F A R?
Yes.
Okay. But the floor area of the house itself is within the.
Yes.
But I thought you just, did you just say that the F A R you're looking for is point eight five?
No.
Uh, yes, that would include uh, the, everything.
Our, our documents say that you're looking for point seven seven.
Um, actually, uh, I, I see that. I see that. Give me a second. Uh, I'm afraid it actually is a point, uh, it's above point seven seven. It's point eight seven.
Can you please then resubmit with the corrected, or can you go back over your, your calculations and the numbers and resubmit as necessary to correct it, please? So we have an exact. So we know what we're doing.
Okay.
Yes.
And, and can I, can I ask you, the, the basement area, I mean, the, the garage area? Um, I thought that there was, uh, is there anything besides garage down there? I kind of thought that the reason why you came, came up with point seven seven was because you were not including where the cars were gonna be parked, but you were including the vestibule, which is on that level.
That's correct.
And it's only there to access the upstairs.
That's correct.
So I, i- is that what your application was for, just to include the vestibule?
And the parking. There are two parking spaces down there. There's, there's, there are two vestibules.
Yeah.
And there are two, uh, laundry rooms.
Okay, so you're, like Robin said, you're, you're gonna have to clear up exactly what you're asking for. Also, on this, on this exterior perspective, do those garages have garage doors, or are they just open?
They have garage doors.
Okay, thank you.
All right, um. Robin, and everybody, why don't we just, is there an itemization we can provide now? So we can, what I'd like to do is give them what records we would like. I noticed the survey on here is, just take one look at this.
It's twenty nineteen is the survey. Again, it's not within the last year.
Okay, so I think, I think they're gonna have to do one anyway. So why don't we get the, the survey updated? And the materials that we refer to, we wanna just itemize what we're looking for, so we can, the, they're on that. Go ahead, God bless you.
Right, well, if there's, if you're gonna ask for a list, I, you know, again, I'd like the, uh, the, the, the list of LLC owners. I didn't see it attached.
Okay.
Um, I see that there's, uh, I, I don't know, there was, it was there, is there still, there's an open complaint from some past owner, Gary White, are there? Brittany, are there, are there any open violations or complaints on this?
There are, but they were all related to property maintenance and that house is obviously not in great shape and it's going to be demolished. And that's the goal. This, it did go around through the village. So many people complaining and we luckily had Arthur dropped off an application to show that it's actively being dealt with. Um, those are just, it's, it's empty, so.
And besides the survey and the LLC owners, Robin, was, if you wanted calculation?
Yeah, we need updated plans. I need a copy of the rendering that may or may not be here. Um.
Okay, anyone else?
Some calculations have to be redone to be, to be correct.
And we, and, and we had asked about, uh, the flood elevations and whether or not is, it is actually in the hundred-year floodplain.
All right, question for you, sir, the applicant. Do you wanna do this in June or in May?
In May. In May.
Oh, in May. Well, you have the. Oh, in May, well, you have the papers ready and?
Arthur, is that?
Yes, we'll do it in May.
That means it has to be done in two, uh, two weeks before the next meeting. So you have like two weeks from now to submit.
Two weeks to do it.
Okay.
Alright.
Alright.
By the way, just, just one more point, uh, for some reason, we got a lot of aerial photographs. But they were all for a different address, two thirty-eight Madison.
The reason for that is, uh, the, um, the writing tends to hide the actual building we're looking at. So we, uh, move your eyes to the, you can see the property clearly.
Okay, alright, okay, thank you.
That's the reason.
Okay.
Alright, thank you, so we're gonna put this over to May. By the way, this puts the third one, I believe, on. Brittany, is that right, the third?
Yep, yep.
Brittany, are there any new applications in yet?
Cut off as, we hit the cutoff, we haven't hit it yet.
No, but I'm, as of today, are there?
But the submission deadline has not occurred yet, so.
I understand that, different question, okay, so let's go now to the next matter, which is the application oh seven.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Can we take a five minute break?
That will, shall. Four minutes and fifty-nine seconds and count. Are you familiar with this one?
Yep. You know, I didn't go to the, you know, Brian, you called up the, the applicant for, um, Raleigh Road, and you took a tour of the backyard, is that what you did?
Yeah. Yeah, I, I, uh, used the email address, and I contacted the applicant, I set up a time for a site visit, and uh, I, I met her, and, uh, we went through all of the conditions on the premises.
Okay, um, I'll say we can get through this one very, I don't know. Ten oh six. Alright, we're communicating now? We're waiting for Robin? Yeah, I present. Is the applicant here on this one? The next one?
Yes.
Okay. Might as well move them up, we'll, we'll wait for Robin. So, Brittany, we now have how many for next month already, four?
Four, these, three.
Three, I'm sorry, three.
Yep. Assuming we get the other items from.
Uh, can we hold up on the screen sharing for, well, alright, you can leave it though. Okay, so this next matter is the application number eight, and number, um, oh seven A B twenty-two nine thirty-five Sylvan Lane. This is an area variance request to construct a one-story side addition. And a deck expansion. Okay, the applicant is here?
Uh, yes, I am, this is Michael Piccarella, architect, representing Erica and Adam Sadler.
Okay, are they here as well?
I think I saw them, yes.
I look, very good, okay.
So.
Thank you and good evening, if you'd like to just.
Good evening, I'll, I'll try to make this as quick as possible, and it's late for everyone. Uh, so, uh, the Saudis have an existing, um, two-story wood frame house, um, um, on, um, Sylvan Lane, now the they're at the end of the property, it'd be sort of the cul-de-sac end of the street, um, and their house is oddly twisted in comparison to the side yard, uh, property lines, so, um, they have, they have, they, uh, they have an existing non-conforming house essentially. Um, between their side yards, uh, and then their, um, uh, combined side yards, so their, um, existing si- uh, side yard here to the north is, uh, uh, eleven feet, point four, where fifteen feet is required. Um, and the, the project really is, is to convert an existing breakfast room, which is here. Convert that into, to be, an existing sunroom, and convert that into a, uh, actual habitable heated breakfast room, because currently it's a sunroom without, without proper heat or insulation, and then expand the kitchen essentially. And here, because currently they have a very small kitchen in proportion to the area, in proportion of the standards um, of, of the houses, and certainly in, in the neighborhood, and certainly in Westchester, um, so the idea is to expand the kitchen, and the only direction we can go um, is in this direction, the, uh, the clients, we, we looked at trying to find another way of doing it without needing, um, uh, a variance. Uh, but there was no other way of doing it, because the kitchen extends into the house, so trying to make an L-shaped uh, room to avoid the variance wasn't really, um, possible um, in, in, in a modern kitchen shape, um, so, but, but we were very sensitive, because we didn't wanna, um, you know, exceed the existing non-conformity, so you could see, we've tried very hard to not protrude into the side yard setback more than the existing house already does. Um, there's a driveway, which is, um, in here, which is right adjacent to their property line, because there's, it's sort of a flag lot, there's a house, uh, uh, the next house over happens to be way in the back here, um, so even though we are not encroaching any further into the side yard, um, I believe the addition that we're proposing is, um, is minimal uh, with little impact, certainly, um, it's gonna improve the house, it's gonna improve their, um, life, and be, allow them to stay in the house, um, and enjoy the house and the neighborhood and everybody else, so that's the, the premise of the, um, variance, I needed a variance for this side yard, and then, of course, the combined side yard, so those are the two variances we need, but again, I'm not, um, you know, I'm not, if you look here at the table, I am not increasing the existing, so the existing side, you can see here, I'm not increasing the existing non-conformities, so. It's a single-story addition, so I don't have any height issues, so. That's, that's the premise of, uh, and then I also submitted, um, um, letters from neighbors in support of the application as well.
Great, I know you saw the property, and you took a look at this, and you saw the property, what you did.
Yeah, I saw, I saw the property from the, the front, I, you know, I, I, I didn't contact the applicant, um, um, I don't think it would have made a material difference, though I wish, of course, that I had, because it's always better when you get to see the, the back, you can't really see all that much from, from the front, um, I do have a question. The, if you go back to that, that, um, the plans that you had before?
Yeah.
That, that triangle, that, it's like triangle, the additional non-conformity in that triangle, do you know what the area is for that?
I can, uh, if you give me a, a couple of seconds here, I could figure it out, because I ha- I have the CAD plans up, hang on. Uh, is eighteen point eight feet, square feet.
Eighteen point eight, you said?
Eighteen point eight two square feet.
Okay.
What's the marks?
Alright, um. I, um, also note that in the, in the section for the area variance, that has to be complete in the application, um, it was, um, number two, there's, the last, you know, there was a sentence that, um, that's missing. Um, it's, it was cut off, so I can't see the, the explanation for the answer to number two. Um, number, you know, number four isn't addressed at all, it's a blank.
Um, which, I'm sorry, which form?
It's the, it's the, um, area variance form, for the, it's the application that you had to fill out.
Yes.
And it's page eleven. Of twenty-two.
Oh, page eleven. Oh, um, I apologize, I'm not sure why that was, but certainly, you know, I can, I can certainly address that, where the, uh, there's no impact on the environmental conditions of the neighborhood, it's a, currently that area, that eighteen square feet is mo- uh, law of grass and, and plantings, there's no, um, adverse effect that our addition will have on that, uh, on, on the neighborhood.
And you, would you be able to see that from the, from the street, that add-on?
No, no, I could show you that, the photograph, I was gonna show you here, so, um, so this is the, um, this is a photograph of the front. You can see, so on the, uh, on the left, so this is that existing sunroom that we were gonna be modifying, it's essentially going to look very similar, the difference is the windows will be a little shorter. And as far our addition is behind, so our addition, you will not see from the front, the addition is, is here. This piece right here is where, this is, this is where the addition's going to go, but this is a view from the street. And you won't be able to see anything, sweet. It's, it's, again, it's on a cul-de-sac, so there's about four or maybe five, um, so these are some of the houses on that street. But, um, here's the rear, so I was looking for, so here's the rear, existing rear, where basically this part here, we've modified. But again, there's, there's certainly, it's gonna be very difficult to see the addition, not to mention, I mean, it's going to look very nice, so I don't, I'm not, I'm not worried about, you know, it being seen, so, you know, certainly, uh, the work that we do is always, uh, you know, aesthetically pleasing, so.
Right, but based, based on the angle, because it comes out, you know, uh, to, to the exact same point as the front. Uh, i- i- it should be obscured.
It will be, because again, this is the view that you would have, that I'm showing right here, this is the view that you would have from the street, there's, again, as you keep going around, you'd have to like go around, then look way back and to.
Are you, are you proposing changes to the roof of the sunroom?
This roof, uh, is eight inches too low to get insulation, so this roof will be, uh, changed, um, to allow for insulation, so it's gonna be raised up about eight inches.
Okay.
Um, the, I have a question, I went, went, on the survey, it shows that you've got your AC units over there?
Yes.
Putting your AC units.
So, there's, there's room, uh, uh, outside the set, uh, you know, uh, within the setbacks. So there's still room here to put AC units.
Oh, I see, back there, as opposed to.
Correct, so this is, you know, this, our proposed deck is completely within the setback, you know, um, eighty percent of our addition is within the setback, so there's room here to put this, uh, the, uh, AC units.
Now the, now what's next to you, is that a driveway?
I mean, there is a drive, yeah, there is a driveway here, because it's a flag lot. Um, I think I have a photograph of that.
The lot next to you is a flag lot, so that's, that's driveway, I couldn't tell what it was, it, this is a, yeah.
I, I, you know what, the funny thing is, I don't think I, I can get that shot, because it was, the house was so far back.
Yes, and you gave, hold it, but you gave an aerial view, which actually does show that very well, uh,
Okay.
The fact that that's either a road or a very long driveway to somebody else's house.
It, it's a very long driveway.
Yeah, so if, if you can blow that one up. And that'll show Robin what she's.
No, no, I saw it, I, I just wondered if it was a driveway or, or some kind of street or some kind of.
It's a driveway.
I wonder, I know what it is, I was there, I looked.
Yeah.
Okay, it's, it's a driveway.
In fact, I had to walk. In fact, I had to walk, I had to go on to it in order to figure this out. Now you've got a six-foot wood fence and as I, right, so this, that fence is going to stay in the same place.
Correct.
For your backyard, and this new addition is going to be in front of that.
Correct, yeah.
I'm assuming you're removing that tree?
If the tree is deemed too close to our addition, then yes, we'll have to remove the tree, unfortunately.
It look, yeah, it looks to me like that's where the addition is going to be.
Yeah, it's, 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 it's very close to it, so.
Brittany, is there a permit requirement for that?
For the building department, you would have to get a tree permit from tree removal permit.
Sure, absolutely.
Going back to that, page eleven of twenty-two, number two, to the, your answer was cut off. If you go back to that.
Oh, it's, oh, so again, I'm sorry, I don't know what happened with this topic. Basically, it was, you know, the addition, we tried, and the settlers know that we, we worked on this for a while to try other versions. But again, the idea here is that, you know, the addition is, is, is necessary to make their kitchen livable. And because of the fact that this property is skewed to the property line, it really creates this unusual side yard setback problem. Because of this, if, if the house was square to the property line, we, we may not need a variance at all, so. But again, this is what we're, we're dealing with, so we, we made the best that we could out of it.
Okay. And I had a question on the EAF, but I don't know if I should ask it if the EAF is not required. EAF required, not required for this?
Charlie, please, Charlie gone?
Or at least there.
Right, yeah, this is a type-two secret example.
I won't ask it. Yeah, I don't have any other, any other questions.
Is there anyone here from, any from the public that wants to speak on this application? Any board members have any other questions on this application?
Oh, actually, though, the applicant mentioned that there were some letters of support from neighbors. I don't have that in my.
I didn't see it either.
I saw that on Novus.
I submitted them electronically, so I can probably.
Yeah, right here, Sylvan Lane's neighbors' letters of support. One, the Seltzers, the Reichs. Yeah, so there's, there's from nine thirty-five Sylvan Ave. Oh, I'm sorry, they're nine thirty-five.
Nine thirty-seven.
Yeah.
Nine thirty-seven and nine forty-five.
We deliver, we live directly next to the Satlers' property, our home faces the same side of the house. They don't have a problem with it.
It's the March twenty-three one, yes, I'm sorry, I just found that too.
Yeah, I got March twenty-one, oh, okay, well.
Well, yeah, the letters, I'm.
The letters, yeah.
Any other questions, anyone has on the board? No comment from the public, is there a motion on this?
My move.
But don't we have, do, do we need, what, wait, we wanted, Greta asked about some of the, having updated the statement in the, Greta, didn't you have the statement in the application? You know, the findings, did you want that updated in writing?
Um, I think, given this type of application, I mean, I don't, I'm happy with what was represented by the applicant during the hearing.
That was, that was what I remembered, is somebody asking for something, so, okay.
All right, motion on this to close?
I've motioned to close.
There's your second.
A second.
Okay, Greta?
Yes.
Robin?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
I will, yes, the hearing is closed, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Take the shared screen off, please.
Just a quick question about this one, would the board like me to prepare a draft resolution?
Or, let's, you know.
We haven't discussed it yet.
Haven't discussed it, give me some minutes, John, we'll get there. We have, we have, we have, we've finished the closed application, we've finished the applications now and the public hearings. Okay, there's, so there's two things to, very quickly, we, we have a couple of decisions to make. Before that, we also have a big meeting next month with the FEIS to address that. I'm going to ask that, Charlie, you passed around the requirements on this, so we all have the requirements that we discussed in terms of what has to take place then, so be prepared for that.
Is that hearing, David, is that hearing going to be at the next, at the May meeting?
I think so, yeah, I, I, I try a few times, it's to get a meeting scheduled, an extra meeting, although Brian pointed out, there is one set aside, but I think for right now, the May meeting, and then I think what we do is, we have three going forward already.
Three what?
Three hearings that are going to continue into the next meeting. So instead of getting in six, I mean, if we're going to have time to deal with things, I think we're going to limit it just to, to, at most, two more, two more hearings. So we'll do a total of five next month, because three of them are coming on from this month.
But the only thing is the application does say that we allow six, so we will have to.
The application I read said it takes up to six, is what I thought, but anyway. That's what I recall, I look at that, but I think what we're going to do is, unless we can have another meeting or another day, I think that okay, if we're not going to have another meeting, if, if we can't set one up, then we've got three and we'll hold it at two more. All right, which is still five hearings.
Plus the FEIS?
Yeah, plus the FEIS, a lot.
The FEIS.
Maybe, I mean, it's, maybe it's too many of them, we got three, well, the three I don't think will be that involved. And we can deal with two more, I guess. What date do we have set aside for the second meeting in the work session?
In what month?
In, for this, as.
We actually.
Effectively.
I can pull it back up, but we did remove it from the website, because we were getting a lot of questions on why we weren't meeting on those dates. So we had taken it down, but I have the list saved, I'll get it and send it around, it's the designated work sessions.
Yeah, when is it, it's twenty, you have it, Brian, it's twenty-eighth or something?
Yeah, so for this month, it's April twenty-eighth, Thursday, April twenty-eighth.
How does that work for everybody?
I can't do it.
I'm available.
I'm probably available.
How about another day that week, Robin?
That's the only day, I think, that week, I can't do it. But I don't know that, that we have, we can do it on the calendar, I can do it any other day that week.
Let me see if there's any other.
Well, Wednesday, Wednesday, the twenty-seventh, I signed up for the ZBA training session, which is a conflict. Because that's when, you know, that's when we have the continuing education credits, I don't know if anybody else signed up for that one.
The only day that there is in, oh, Zoom, it, it all depends, I, I can't gauge it until the fifteenth. The fifteenth is when we'll know whether or not we're going back to in-person. If we are in-person, there's a meeting every night that week, except for Friday. So the, that we wouldn't have a space available.
Where's that?
Including Thursday, does Thursday happen, or we're the only one on Thursday?
No, it is, Thursday is tree committee meeting, planning board meets on the twenty-seventh, flood mitigation.
Also, it's Thursday, we couldn't, so what we, we, that was, see, that was all done when it was all Zoom.
Yeah, that's the problem, so, you know.
We used to use the library, there's that room downstairs we used to use, when there was not enough room.
I don't know if it's set up, as far as, we'd have to still have Charlie on Zoom, those, I'd have to ask IT, I have no idea. And we may be allowing Zoom to the public still, even when we go back to in-person, so I have to find out what the village is planning with that.
And let me find out one thing, maybe about Zoom. Yes, ask too.
Was Monday, the, Monday, the eighteenth, was that an option for anybody? Because that is a clear day on the calendar.
Oh, Monday, the eighteenth?
Yeah.
We didn't discuss that, it wasn't the ones proposed.
Yeah, I'm, I'm out of town.
Yeah, I am too, well, I'm coming back that night. So if we can do it, what was that, in April? We do it one night that week in April, that, that, the week of the twenty-five, twenty-six, twenty-seven, twenty-eight, and that week? Robin, that one day was no good for you, right?
Yeah, that one day is no good.
What day was that that was no good, Robin, I'm sorry?
Thursday.
Right, but Brittany, Brittany said when you stepped away that until April fifteenth, she won't know if we're back in person, and that's going to dictate the availability of.
Right. Yeah, I guess the only thing we can do is, is.
I mean, if we're, I'm kind of hoping we remain on Zoom, because it will make it easier, then we can do it, you know, any day that week. It wouldn't matter that the other boards are meeting, so, you know, unless we wait till the fifteenth to decide that.
Well, you could set a tentative date.
Yeah, let's set a, let's set a date, I, I, I'm sorry, I don't know if there's someone, set a date.
Okay, the twenty-seventh, I have planning board, so I'm unavailable.
Right, and that's, and that's the, the continuing education credit. I'm available the Monday and Tuesday, the twenty-fifth.
I'm available Monday, the twenty-fifth, if that works for anybody.
I'm, I'm not available on Monday, the twenty-fifth.
You're not available Tuesday, Brittany, is that what you said?
I have a meeting, but I can, it's not, I could possibly get coverage for it.
All right, so why don't we, the twenty-sixth work, if we, assuming it happens, Brittany can get coverage and assuming they don't go back. I'm just thinking if there's anything before that.
Really, next week is ideal for a Zoom, if, if that's, but I know we.
Anyone available any day next week, is there a bad day next week?
Yeah, I'm, I'm out of town, Monday through Wednesday.
You'll be back Wednesday, the thirteenth?
Thursday, I'm back.
Yeah, I can't do it Thursday or Friday, I have, let's just say I have a lot of cooking to do. After, I'm sorry.
What about the cleaning?
To the important part, the cooking.
She outsources that. Then the following week doesn't work.
Wednesday, I, I, I will say that if we, you know, if we can, if we can have like a two-hour meeting on Wednesday, I could do it, but I can't do more than that, I mean, really, absolutely.
No, 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 two hours max, two hour, I would say an hour and a half.
Do, I could do like an hour.
The twentieth, you said?
No, no, this was the thirteenth.
I have a planning board, I won't.
Greta can't do it that week.
Yeah, I'm out of, I'm out of town, I'm flying back on the thirteenth.
Yeah, so, and I can't, so, and Friday, Thursday's out.
You want to meet, we'll do the airport with Zoom, you can do an airport. Very frustrating, sorry, he's being honest, it's not everyone's fault, the fourteenth is.
I can't do the fourteenth.
Even for two hours?
Let's be, let's be real here, Dave, no.
All right, so that kills that whole week, so the, the first week is the week, so the eighteenth, what was availability there for anybody?
Problem with that week is village calendar, we won't know if we, the eighteenth is open, the eighteenth, there is no meeting. So if it is in-person, we would have access to.
I can't do the eighteenth itself.
I can't.
Twenty, how's the nineteenth to the twenty-first?
Nineteenth, there's a meeting, Harbor Coastal meets on the twentieth, BAR on the twenty-first.
Okay, but if we're Zoom, that's okay.
Zoom, it would be fine, except for Harbor Coastal, I'm part of.
Okay, so let's do a Zoom, what dates can we do on that, nineteen, twenty, twenty-one?
Brittany, what should we say?
Nineteenth or twenty-first, ideally the twenty-first.
So it's on Zoom, if it's, that's okay with me.
Twenty-first would be fine with me.
So do you want to write down tentatively?
Yeah, yeah.
Charlie, twenty-first. Don't be so excited, Charlie.
Someone will be from my office if I can't attend, but my calendar's open.
Okay, then you can attend, you see, we're doing this for you, man.
I never know when the kids are going to throw me a curveball.
Four twenty-one would be possible Zoom if we're remaining on Zoom, and then four twenty-six, possible meeting in-person if we go back to in-person, correct?
Okay, twenty-sixth if we were in-person?
Yes, that was open on the calendar for the village.
So lock that in, we're all good for the twenty-first to the twenty-sixth?
I apologize, it's not open, but I believe I might be able to get us another room for the twenty-sixth.
What you do is you tell the other people who have it that they got moved to the other.
Maybe the way to go.
Brittany, what's happening here? Come on.
I know what's important.
There you go, so four twenty-six in-person or four, what was the other day, nineteen?
Or twenty-one.
Zoom.
Okay, between the two, just for the board membership, do you have a preference? Would you rather just firm up the twenty-sixth and take that, or you want to maybe do the earlier, the twenty-first, right?
That, that would be my preference.
I will be very honest with you, though, if the twenty-first is in-person, that's BAR, and we cannot move them out of the courtroom, so that's not going to be an option.
No, I know, I'm just saying, okay, but our, so our preference is four twenty-one Zoom and then four twenty-six in-person, if not.
And the location is to be figured out.
Could we, could we decide to do Zoom?
I don't know, I, I, I don't know.
I can answer that, you can, you can do Zoom, however, you have to publicly notice your location of where you will be zooming from, and the public would have to be able to attend that location.
Wait a second, what if everybody is a different location, because Zoom has that, that, right?
Then it makes the public notice very complicated, I've yet to see a municipality do this. There's, I think, a few cases out there where someone zoomed from a Starbucks and they publicly noticed that as a location.
So you're telling me that it's got to then be noticed as to where each member is?
If each, each member who's participating by Zoom.
All right, really tremendously helpful, Charlie.
Brittany, how big is your place?
Well, can we just decide that we're going to do first by Zoom and.
We're going to do, our first choice is the twenty-first, April twenty-first by Zoom. If we find out mid-April that they're not doing Zoom anymore, then we do the twenty-sixth in-person.
But couldn't, couldn't we decide that we want to do Zoom?
We have to then.
Yes, but as Charlie said, if we want to do Zoom, then each one of our locations has to be noticed. So if you're going to be at home, your home address would have to be noticed in the notice as a place where you're zooming from, and your home address has to be open to the public.
Oh, I understand what you're saying.
And that means that you've got to supply the potato chips. All right, um, now. Charlie, we have FEIS on this, all right, next matter is of the five open matters that we've got at the side, and it's not ten forty, wonderful. Thirteen forty-six Raleigh Road, we did not vote on, I believe.
No.
Okay.
No, we need to vote on that.
There's a draft resolution on that.
Can I make a request then? And with, the resolutions were all submitted much later than would be ideal, they were all submitted at different times. I've, and given the website that's being used now, I find it very difficult to download things, it's not as easy. And so can we get all the resolutions like at least a week ahead, and can we get them all at the same time?
Yeah, that'd be good. So Charlie, just do the whatever, but just send the group over, like a week in advance. We had, I, I have a very difficult time with that website, I, I.
So between the, right, so between all of it, there's one that came in one day, and then another one came in another day, and I couldn't download, and then I wasn't sure. So if we could get them all at once, and clearly whether they're coming from Rob or Charlie or Brittany, however they're coming, because they can come together.
Okay, so on this one, we have any. Okay, so on this one, we have any comments and discussion on this, please? This is the application that was made, I was looking at it before. It's. Give me a second here, this is the expansion of a deck. Sorry, I missed it. Okay, so this is thirteen forty six. Um, Raleigh Road, if we've gone over this.
Right now, Dave, there is a question on page one under the uh, yeah, two, three, four, five, six, the sixth, whereas.
Yeah, there's a question on that one.
Robert had had brought up to us, so I think that that's something we'll have to address.
Okay, when did this close? Do we know? You know what, from now on, Brittany, if you don't mind, if you could just put down the close date on these, so when we know. Charlie, do you by any chance know the date of closing on this or not?
Yeah, I believe it was closed, then deliberated on, and so you have to take a vote on it tonight. This is would be your within your sixty two day timeframe.
Okay. All right, so we had this one issue with regard to a dimension, so I guess we could build it, we we could make the we could, I guess, Brian, the way to deal with this is to make the um resolution comply with and ditto the plan. That's what I'm looking for.
And that's how it's drafted, where he talks about the distance from the stairs to the setback line.
Right. Yeah, I'm looking at that here.
We did discuss that, I know it came up at the hearing, so.
No, it did, we did, as the note of the application for a proposal of six, seven, eights, okay, that's that, I see. Yeah. The issue there was the steps coming out, right? Charlie, any suggestion as to how to draft and deal with it and?
The way it was drafted and um i- is noting kind of both of the setbacks, so where the stairs are, it's three feet, four point five inches from the property line. As you extend to the back, it's four feet, three, seven eights.
Okay. Um.
So I it it says here that the variance is up to two feet, seven and a half inches at its closest point. So I mean, that's that's the extent of the variance.
Right, yeah, I, yeah.
That's fine.
Yeah, I think so. All right. Is there a? Anyone I want to have a discussion about further discussion, we did discuss this before.
No, the one thing that I had asked for, they included, uh, which was to put some type of uh gutter system on the overhang for these stairs so that the water would be managed, so it wouldn't go on to a neighbor's property or or go down and create a hazardous condition on the walkway from the front of the house to the back. So it's it's in here.
Right, okay. Okay, um. Is there a motion on this at all?
So what are we doing about the um, the issue of how big the setback is?
He covered that by giving it the variance, he gave it to a maximum at the closest point.
Of of two feet, seven and a half inches, which is in here, so that's fine.
Okay. Uh, the only thing is I was reading this and I did not. Um, now, we had, we used to say, as I recall, we agreed that we didn't need to say that it has to be done. You know, we didn't want to put time limits in because the people were always never getting them done in one year, but didn't we, we didn't want the one year, but did we want them to have no time? So they could build this whenever, or do we want to have a time limit for variances? I mean, we, there used to be a standard set of these um conditions. Um, so that's just a question of do we have anything that we want? Do we not care? Do we not care if they're built?
What are we saying now? How long do we require now for the permit, for the uh, one year?
That, no, no, we decided with one year was much too short, that people were often not getting it just between all kinds of things. So do we, do we care? Do we want a time? And if so, what do we?
I think you want a time because otherwise you're gonna have a situation where someone says, three years ago, I got this right. Whether it's vested or not, want to say eighteen months unless otherwise extended.
Yeah, that sounds good.
That's fine. Or I'd be okay with two years if you want, but either way.
Okay, yeah, I think eighteen months is fine.
You want language in there that reflects our special use permits where they have to apply four months in advance of it?
No.
No, not for that. We've had people come in and say I need to extend it.
Yeah.
Okay, all right, there a motion on this?
Um, the other thing is that there's a, there's a clause that we used to put in. Um, which says the granting of this application shall not be deemed to relieve the applicants of the need to obtain approval of any other border agency or officer prescribed prescribed by law or ordinance with regards to this application. I think that's a worthwhile thing to put on.
Oh, it's not in here automatically?
No.
It should be, there should be something in it, Charlie, that basically we've used in the past. This is subject to all other, you know, compliance with all other applicable statutes, laws and ordinances.
Yeah, I'll add that, we have building permit, New York State Building Code provisions, but I'll add other, any other applicable.
Right, because we need the village requirements, which just doesn't have.
You know what, to attend a building department demonstrates compliance, I don't think you need to say, you can take out that demonstrates compliance.
Yeah.
God, that'll get covered in the other, okay?
Okay.
Are we good?
All right, I make a motion to approve as amended.
All right, I have a whole question if we need a second, I don't think we do, but fine, is there a sec, Brian? Okay.
A second.
Talk about that one day, I've never quite grasped that.
And and I'll also vote for.
Okay, Brian, you can't, Brian, vote for us, go ahead, you, we voted by mail or not?
This, we, I'll, I'll, I'll send you my absentee ballot.
All right, I got it here. Brian, so what are you, voting?
Yes.
Yeah, okay, Greta?
Yes.
Robin?
Yes.
I'm yes. Charlie, on this one, can you get this, you can file this now, but can you get this to me within a few days so we can just get this out of the way?
Yes.
Okay, the next.
Well, I have, I raised, I raised, I have a question about the signing of this and and I don't care, but I only raise it because it's come up before. And I want to make sure that if we have something we need to worry about, we're doing it and that has to do with the with the secretary issue as.
Yeah, the answer to that.
As long as I've been on the board and and Dave, you were on for longer than me, there's always been a signature by a secretary and the issue came up a year or la- last year or the year before of, do we actually need a secretary to sign? And the answer was, from whoever was the council at the time, I don't remember if it was you, Charlie, if it was your predecessor, said, no, the law doesn't require it. But since we've always done it in the village, it was appropriate to continue to doing it, and so we did. So I don't know what the right answer is, but I think we should, if we've decide, if we're deciding that we don't need it because the law doesn't require it and there's no reason to do it, then I think we should say that, because otherwise someone's going to wonder if it's, why is it, if they already done these new resolutions? And why it's in the old and is something wrong with them and I think we should do something about it. And I don't know the answer to the first question is, is it required? Whether by state, not by state law, I know, but is there anything somewhere else that requires it?
Yeah, so this came up with Rob when he called me on this a while ago. And basically what I was told by him was that you only, there's no need for a second signature on it because there was some reason that they wanted me to sign right away. Um. Before, I I'm gonna ask you this, Charlie, I'm not even sure you need a signature on. The filing of a resolution, but I think clearly, I, from what Rob told me was it's just needs a chair signature, I don't care. It's it's honestly, it's because of Zoom, because in person it was never an issue.
The only thing it really needs to be is stamped as filed with the village.
Exactly.
It's common practice with many municipalities to have it signed by the chair.
All right. So let's, yeah, I don't think it has to be filed, that's funny, because Charlie and I were talking, I asked about seconding, all right, I think. See, it it really, Robin, it never was an issue because it was always just two people on it and it was done because you're at a meeting and they'd hand the resolutions out, pass them down, so.
This hasn't really been an issue, um, for the Zoom meetings, they they were prepared, everybody, the people who had to sign, the chair and whoever was um, and the secretary signed it and just faxed the pay, you know, scanned in, so I don't think it was a problem either way, Dave. And I'm fine, I mean, I agree, I don't think we need that, if we don't need, I just want to make sure that if we don't, without, that that it just doesn't look like it's disappeared and something happened. Because if you don't say anything, then all of a sudden, nobody, there's no second signature.
I don't care.
Why not?
Charlie, do you care? I I don't care, I mean, I just think, I find it easier just for one person to sign, but it's important that it gets circulated, that's the most important thing. And as you said, it doesn't even have to be signed, but, okay. Does anyone have a strong preference anyway? Okay, Charlie, do the usual issue one, I'm I'm happy just having the chair sign it, but whatever, it it's not an issue. You can do even odd ones.
Yeah, we'll keep it as the chair, um, in a separate issue, is there now a secretary of the board?
No, no, we're not going to deal with anything else new on this agenda today because we got a Thursday, okay. Next, number two is two eleven, that was voted on.
Yep, voted on and the resolution was.
Circulated out, okay.
Faired.
Okay.
Well, if it was voted on and it was circled, then why is it on the agenda? I was confused.
I don't know.
We just got that today, there was still, it was, we weren't a hundred percent, if it needed to be reviewed, the edits to the resolutions.
There are changes based on comments on the resolution.
Right, okay, the next one too, number three is nine eleven Fairway Lane, that was the generator one, right, okay, that was voted on and approved. And then Baldwin Place was also, that was the second floor with the enlargement, that was voted on and approved, correct?
Correct.
Ask that when they're assigned, if the resolutions can please be sent to me as well, make sure I'm CC'd on it so I can get them to the clerk's office, please.
Yep, I'll send out a resolution package tomorrow for.
For signature, great, thank, I just gonna say, I, as we went through those, I just destroyed my, I printed them out, sorry about that. Uh. Okay. The next one on is the at three ninety seven Palmer Avenue, okay, um. What I'm gonna do on that is baiting if, just make a motion on it, but I may, but let me run through, I I think we can all, if we each take like, I'm just looking, oh, God, it's ten fifty three. All right. I'll run through my comments and then I think each of us should quickly go through our comments, I mean, to me this is a non-conforming building that by code is defined and is the use as an office building, which is defined term in the code as to what it can be for. It has a vested status as such under our code, um and which provides in part that it cannot be altered, enlarged or extended, and that means when it talks about that, it's the building structure it's talking about. Um, the uses are broad. I'm I'm aware of uh both Convy Irvington Court of Appeals and and I know Robin brought up Toys R Us V Silva, and those two cases were decided the same year by the Court of Appeals. They both provide the idea that a municipality has choices. One of the choices it can do is it can say this is the new code and everyone previously has to comply, in which case the village ends up having an expensive time because it's got a, it's taking effectively. Or it can do mid-ground in different ways, it can amortize them as well. Village of Mamaronek, uh, in accordance with its authority, has elected to allow them to continue and not just to continue, but to be rebuilt in the event they are inadvertently destroyed. So to me, this is a vested issue on a vested property, which is an office building that has office building rights that are defined. The question came up about with this about the special permit use. And the special permit is a provision. And the question that somebody brought up on the board, I thought was Greta, was that, does a special permit constitute an improper use or of a change of a prior non-conforming use? Without regard to whether I think you can change it or not, because I don't think you can go into each office and decide it, it's an office building and that is defined what our office uses by our code, but the special permit provision both by state law and village code are very clear. Both provide that it is a permitted use that and village code says directly in it that a special use sentence is deemed to be permitted uses in their respective districts, okay, they are subject to conditions, but they are all uses. So it's not even a variance that comes to question on this thing. In this case, it's not an expansion of any type, there's no alteration of any building, that the structure or expansion of it. So I I don't see a special permit under New York law and under the code as as creating some kind of a a different use, it is a legitimate and protected use for office use or whatever, different types of offices may need certain permits. Um, so that's where I fall on the special permit, you said, I don't know. Another issue that came up during this thing was whether it's in the in the provisions of the adult use district. Just three forty two, I guess, one away, apply. Uh, the board has never applied that in the past, it's always, it's never been applied, um, and if you take a look at it while it makes reference to the adult use, it's not defined as an adult use within that section of the code. And that section of the code is very, very prohibitive and restrictive, it would not even allow anything in, except in a manufacturing district. So it aid by the code's own language, it's not proper because it's not one. And by the precedent on every application that we've ever had on this thing, it's not been applied, uh, so I think from a both presidential and this, and it's illogical, because it ends up basically saying, oh, you have to comply with this and this is, you can't do it anywhere except in a manufacturing district. So my last concern is obviously that we've passed these in the past and we've done them recently and I don't know of a prerogative, to me, there's a constitutional issue if you don't. So as I see it, is you've got yourself a, an an existing non-used building which is non-conforming, um, the alterations of the are defined, I actually wonder what a few words define is alter. And it has got to do with structure. So to me, it's that, this is, I'm trying to find, there's a section that deals with what kind of uses you do constitute office uses and they're very broad and um yeah, office building, there is office building and then there's office use. So I I don't see how, I think this fits squarely within, and it's clearly consistent with the prior ones that we've granted. Um. I think that there are some issues that have that exist around the subject of it, but that's not the grounds to alter a use for someone who's licensed by New York. I think it may be a concern for just making sure there's proper enforcement. And that's obvious, but that would apply to many, many areas, and we've encountered that in different situations. So that's the way I see it, to me, it's um, I mean, I don't, that's my analysis, so. Someone else want?
Yeah, I I can tell you that I I think I I started off this discussion, uh, you know, just by reading the code. Uh, and when I really gave this thought and and tried to analyze I've asked two questions on this application and it's 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 really caused a lot of discussion. Uh, but I think that I have the answers that I've been looking for uh on this. First question I asked was, you know, should this be in the manufacturing zone, uh, you know, based upon the provisions of adult use and and the other requirements of the special X permit? Uh, the answer resoundingly by the board is that is not our precedent. We have always allowed these in office buildings. Okay, asked and answered. Uh, so, uh, you know, I'm satisfied by that because that is the practice that has always been in the village. Um. So therefore, this type of business can exist in an office space. Now, this building is a pre-existing non-conforming office space, uh, nothing has changed that. Uh, even though it is in a residential district, it's pre-existing and non-conforming, so uh, it's able to maintain its status within its walls, so therefore, any anything that that can go into an office. Anything that that can go into an office building, any office, which we have said this type of a business can go into an office. Uh, it should be capable of going in there, so then my second question was, well. But it because this requires a special use. Uh, i- is that an enhancement, and 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 then does that start to fall uh, fall afoul of? Uh, uh, you know, changing the character and 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 so on and so forth. Uh, not to go back into the whole discussion, uh in the end. If you go to section three forty two point sixty eight, there's sixty eight. It clearly says that special uses for which conformance to additional standards is required by the chapter. Shall be deemed permitted uses in their prospective districts, uh you just have to satisfy the requirements, so. That's really the exact question I was asking for, if this has been allowed in an office building. Uh, I don't see. You you know, this, this clearly says that it should still be allowed in the office building. You know, they just have to comply with, uh, you know, with the additional regulations, it doesn't, it doesn't change what it is, so. For me, that that really. Finishes my questions on this, based on precedent, the fact that it needs a special use permit. But it doesn't change its right uh to be in an office building. You know, I'm. Satisfied with the answers.
Ryan, I just point out that office uses are defined, there's a discussion of in three forty two twenty nine. Saying that executive administrative business professional and general office. Not that it gives much light. Anyone else have any comments on this?
I mean, I, as I mentioned last time. I think that it's that from the code's perspective, just the history of massage parlors and adult uses. It lo- this, the adult use, the massage parlor provisions were added after. The adult use provisions were added to the code, and the question was, um, was it done to. Make it clear that they were adult uses, or was it done to make it clear that they weren't adult uses, and I think since they weren't defined as adult uses, I think it was a. An attempt by the village to make it clear that massage uses are not adult uses, notwithstanding some of the other language. However, I have a slightly different perspective, and I don't have an answer, it's something that I I have not yet gotten uh satisfied with, which is. What is the use? So the code says that a non-conforming use of a building. Shall not be changed to another non-conforming use, okay, so the question is, what is?
What section are we talking about?
Three forty two sixty four B.
Right.
Okay, that's specific, so the question is, is the use a non-conforming use now? Interestingly, use is not defined in our code. So we don't have any guidance as to what the use is, um, the fact that it's. Is is office use the term, will a C of O, when the C of O is issued for this use? Will the C of O certificate of compliance, when there's been a C of O issued for the. Um, massage parlor in that other office building, or the two other office buildings, did it say office, or did it say massage use? If it said massage use, then it strikes me, it is a different use, um, if it says office use, then I think that's how the village considers it. I don't think we have an answer to that question yet, and we haven't gotten an answer, we haven't raised it, maybe I hadn't raised it, but I think that's the question that I don't have an answer to. And if it is a different non-conforming use, then we have to decide that it's not be. And and that it's not, it's less non-conforming and more harmonious with the area, and it doesn't mean we can't do it, it just means we have to make an additional finding. So I don't know the answer to my question of, just because it's in this office building. Doesn't mean that the use is the same use as the prior use. Because it doesn't mean it's an office use, again, I don't know whether the village considers these office uses. I E professional offices, or whether the village considers them massage parlors as a separate use. And I think it all depends on what the C of O certificate of compliance, certificate of occupancy that the village has issued for other.
I think I might be able to shed some light, because I did have that question in my mind as well, Robin. And so if you look at all the other zoning districts in the village. Massage establishments are not a permitted use anywhere, they're not even listed as a recognized use. So i- in that sense, the use can't be classified as massage establishment. Otherwise, they would be instantly denied and would have to get a use variance. However, they have come before this board, they have come before the village building department, so that would lead. Um, one to believe that they are classified under a different use category. Otherwise, they would be completely banned.
Well, wait, where are massage, you're saying massage uses are not allowed anywhere in the village, they're allowed by special permit?
They're, well, they're not listed. Any zoning district.
Well, there's a catch, there there is a catch-all in the manufacturing district, that if in fact this is an adult use. It can exist there.
Yeah, but I don't think it is an adult use, so I think that that.
So we, so we're just going in circles, that's the.
I think, I think that if I may just add this to everyone's thought processes here, to me, if I look at the code. Where it talks about existing uses, it talks about n- non-alterations of the structures. The use of this property, the non-conforming use, if I own this building and you and my zoning changes. Now, it's, to me, whether it's a dentist, an accountant, a lawyer, uh unlicensed massage, um. Any type of an office use is what it is, I don't think you can say to someone, the building is fine, but no. You need to get a chiropractor only in that space, or you need to get such and such only in that space. That's not a change of use of the building, because I believe even the sections that you refer to, talks about. Use which does not conform to the use regulations, uh shall not be altered. These are from, these are now, see, I I, to me, it's, we're not changing the building to another use. Another use would be if it's not an office building, if it was going to become a different type of a use. But otherwise, if you imagine you have. Ten, ten units in a retail operation, in a commercial office building, and. I can't understand how we would have any right to say to the person, well, you have a vested right to keep it, but you can't change your tenants. You can't, they're they're office uses.
I do, I don't think. You're missing the point, David, I think, David, you missed the point that I'm raising, which I'll raise again, which is, if. A a massage parlor is an office use, then it's not a change of use, that's what I was saying. If a massage parlor is not considered by the village as an office use, it's considered in certificates of. In other words, if you have an office, then the then the C of O is going to say office, if those massage parlors. When they are in office buildings, the C of O doesn't say office, but says massage parlor, then the village considers it, considers it. A different use, and in that case, it is a change of use, Charlie's saying that he thinks it has to be an office use. And considered by the village as an office use, because otherwise, it's not a permitted use. Anywhere in the village, which goes to the question, but it is, it either is office. Or it's not office, if it's office, then it doesn't matter what you put in the office, it's a permitted use.
I don't even, I don't, I I just wanted, I don't agree with any exactly, any, any of this discussion, I. I see it as. Maybe it could be in office, a permitted office use, if you didn't have this issue. Of being a pre-existing non-conformity use, the fact is, this code allows. Different subsets of uses, there are three, three or four residential uses that are different uses. We deemed last month that storage has two different subsets of uses, indoor and outdoor. Um, because that's what the code indicates, here, the code doesn't define office uses. So it could be, the actual use could be within the umbrella of office, but it's still different uses. As indicated that the code sees it as a different use, um, in terms of this application. This is, application is asking for extended hours, seven days a week, this is a. Extended use, and therefore pursuant to three forty two sixty four B. I don't think you can say it's less non-conforming, when the use is actually. More extensive than the prior use of having the doctor's space.
Yeah, the only difference is, I mean, if you take a look at office districts, the closest they come to ever saying what an office is. Is executive administrative business professional and general offices, which I think is what an office is. I understand Robin's point, Robin, you're saying, is it permitted use, well, it's a general office, and it's a licensed person by the state of New York. I don't see that as a change, and as far as Greta, when you talk about subsection B. I don't think. Non-conforming, yeah, you're saying that was, you're non-conforming, you shall not be changed, it's not being changed, it's remaining an office building. And that's what it is, and it would be changed if there was an expansion, so that it was going to be an industrial use or something else. So I guess tha- that's the differences I see in this, I don't know, Charlie, if you wanna give any, anything on this, by all means, but.
Greta, can you just say what section you were referring to, I'm sorry?
I was just referring to what what um three six, sixty four, three forty two sixty four B.
Okay, thank you, that was all, I was.
That's where, that's what we've been talking about.
I was talking about different.
Change, and you see even the change then, which is allowed.
A less non-conforming use, so seven days a week, ten o'clock at night, that's not a less non.
We control the hour, so if an accountant wanted to come in, or a lawyer wanted to come in and work at night, they wouldn't be able to. I mean, I I hear what you're saying, then you limit the hours, that that's within your prerogative, but I never knew hours would change these, the use of a building, that's.
Well, I mean, that's how you kind of, how else you determine whether it's less non-conforming or not, is.
I think because you don't. Because I don't think you go into each, each, each user, otherwise, I don't know how you do anything, would never, to my knowledge. I've never seen, you'd go into each user, it's an office, and by the way, do they issue COs for each user in a building in Mamaroneck?
And that's the point, and that's another point of why this is a more extensive use, because there's more administration. I think the code sees this as a separate use.
I know, the special permit language is as clear as it can be, state and locally, to my knowledge. Both say they are permitted uses.
Yeah, they are permitted, but you still have this provision, which I don't think it it meets.
And so that you're saying that depending on who leases it, it could be changed to a non-conforming use?
Yes.
And what is the guidance for that? I don't, I'm just not following it, I'm trying to understand it.
Um, um, the guidance is.
What if somebody came in, it's an accountant, is that okay?
We wouldn't, yeah, it it would, the ac- an accountant would be okay, we wouldn't know about it, you wouldn't be having cars going back and forth typically. You know, this is a different use, these are parameters that are being requested, um.
HR block was there, that would be a permitted use, that you'd have lines, anyway, okay.
Well, good, the question that I had was, is this a different use because it's a special X permit? And and that's why three forty two sixty eight basically says. Um, just because it's a special X permit, it it doesn't take away their right to be in. The districts that they have been allowed in before, um, and that's why I, you know, I came back to that. If we've let these things exist in an office building before, what right do we have to keep them out of this one?
I think you got one thing too, Charlie. When somebody comes in for a special use permit, they challenge it, the first thing the court says is, this is a permitted use. Then they look, right, I mean, that's, it's like, you can't stop on that, a a special permit use. Has one, forget about, and you're right about Brian, the village code says so, but the village code doesn't need to say so. New York State says, a special permit use is a use, it's a permitted use. However, and I I think this really originated with cleaning, the dry cleaners, but they said, listen, you know. You may want to just check certain things about them, I mean, restaurants, or, but there there's various different uses that they just say. But the 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 analysis has always been state and local, correct me if I'm wrong, Charlie, but it's, these are permitted uses legally.
I don't think, I don't think the fact that it's a permitted use answers the question, lots of uses could be permitted here, that doesn't mean it's more. Um, it's another non, well, wait, let me rephrase that, no, the only uses permitted in this zoning district are residential. This is a residential district, that's it, that's all that's permitted here, so we have. We have a non-conforming use, we're in the building, right, we have office uses, so. The fact that uses are permitted by special permit, doesn't make it a conforming use. If I wanted to put a restaurant here, that's permitted by special permit, I still couldn't put it here, because it's clearly a non-conforming use. The fact that it's permitted by special permit, just means it's a permitted use in those districts where it's permitted. It doesn't change the fact that it's a diff- so the question is to whether, the fact that it's all special permits are clearly permitted uses. But it doesn't mean they're permitted uses anywhere in the village, is a permitted uses in those districts where the code. Says the special permit is available, so the question here is, is it a different use? Than the existing non-conforming use, if it is the same use, then it's no issue, if it's. Use.
But the the issue is that some people were saying before, that the fact that it's a special permit is de jure, that's, it de facto. That it becomes improper, i- it it doesn't comply, I I I I understand your analysis is, you go to the actual substance of what it is.
Well, now, the other question is. Is the use. Uh dictated by the business, or is the use dictated by the building? And the question is whether or not this business changes the use of the building. Because the building is the one uh that is non-conforming, pre-existing. So that, that is my, that is my question. Uh, i- if it doesn't change the nature of the building, and the building is allowed to exist there. You know, i- i- it's as if that building, a- although it's in a residential district, because of its status. It's kind of like the Vatican, it's an independent nation uh sitting there, so if we've let these establishments. Into an office building before, and this office building is the use which is permitted at that location. Does this business change the use of that building?
I I don't, and I understand, that's your point, to me, it's an office building, and people that can inhabit office buildings can inhabit this building. It it's a non-office use, I mean, if you, I don't see how you can say that a massage therapist can't operate. In an office building or a professional building, particularly where one has to just drive around in a vehicle. And. Just like a half a dozen you could see in a moment.
But that, that's not what you're, we're saying, I mean, or at least not what I'm saying, I'm saying that there is a competing provision in the code. That um. That is controlling here, and that's, that, you know, it could be deemed. A non, a non-conforming use, that is not a lesser non-conforming use, which is required by the code.
So what you're saying, what you're saying is, if it expands the hours of the building. You're now, y- you know, you're 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 now falling afoul of three forty two sixty four, I guess, B. Because it's it's becoming even more non-conforming.
Yeah, yeah, the point of the 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 code, as I see it, is they want this district to become residential. They don't want to expand the non-conforming part, they want to, in time. Expand the conforming part, and they want to be fair in grandfather. You know, those non-conforming uses, but they don't want to expand it.
Okay, so what if, what if, what if you gave hours of restriction? So let's say you restricted the hours of their operation uh to only what has historically been in this building, so let's say. Whatever it is, I don't know what it is, no Sundays and and no past six o'clock, or or whatever it may be, if you were able to do that. Uh, would you feel the same way about this business, or do you think that that solves your?
I would feel better about it.
You would feel better about that, okay.
What are the hours that they're looking for?
I think Greta said seven days a week.
I thought, and I think until ten o'clock.
Yeah, it was very late. I agree. It was very long. I remember that.
What are the others open to? But even if you, so let's say you went till nine o'clock or eight o'clock.
Well, it would, it would have to be commensurate with whatever the hours currently are of, of the building. And I think the only other thing in there is the dentist office, correct? The, the first floor?
I think that's right. Dentist does not open seven days a week till ten o'clock at night.
But I guess, help me on one thing. The part of my have is that I don't see this nonconforming use language that you do, Greta, where it says it has to be, it can't be changed to another. That's the nonconforming. That means an office space can't be changed to a non-office space in my book. That's what that reads. Cause this whole thing is about, that's the building that has the, the nonconformity. So it's the office building. So I can't change the office building to something under that unless I get a special permit to do so. And I think, I think, I think.
Uses are of that office building?
I don't think so. I really don't. I don't think that i- if it's an office building, it's an office building. If it's a commercial building, it's a commercial building. It's a residence, it's a residence. I don't say, okay, it's a nonconforming residence. You have four children. The people who lived here before had two. Sorry. You can't, you're enlarging it to use. I don't, and I still, nah, I'm being fair with, I just want you to understand. I don't see that. To me, I don't, that would be more to the point even. If, if I coming in and I have my mother-in-law and I have three kids, four kids, and the people there for, since it was built, had no kids and was two of them.
Provision is preexisting.
You can't, well, I think you're wrong on your analysis where you say that villagers trying to do that. Cause if they would, they would have never had three forty two, sixty six in there.
Balance, you know, interest, but they're.
Anything, excuse me. They didn't balance a thing. They said, you can continue here. You can rebuild it if it's destroyed. And you can actually go in and try to expand it, get a special permit from the Board of Appeals. So it's like, I don't know, if that's the way you want to say no to somebody, I mean.
Expand it. We don't have the right to expand it.
Man, some occasionally, I would, some of these are going there to be confirmed, listen, just a second, it's in the other section. Ceases, I removed a whole apart. So section in here, one second. Any other alternate, there we go. Any other alteration? This, this deals with another section, but it's right in, of a new or new construction must require a variance in the board.
But you're not looking at three forty two, sixty four, nonconforming use of buildings. That's, that's.
I understand, but I guess, listen, we have a very different approach to one thing. And that is, to me, it's not who's in there. Cause then it would really go to how many people live in a nonconforming residence. You would, every application that was nonconforming, I don't know, you'd have to see what, everything about them. To me, this is. It's an office building. That's what it is. Right. And it doesn't go to who my tenants are any more than it does their particular background or characteristics. I think if they're a legal office building, that's what they are. I think about enlarging it, you're talking about different factors involved.
When, when I looked at three forty two, sixty four B, a noncore, nonconforming use of a building shall not be changed to another nonconforming use. So therefore, you're not going to change an office building to a restaurant. Uh, so if it's, so it's still an office building, and that's why I keep just going back to my, very rudimentary, simple uh, thoughts. Um, and I'm not saying that it's, it's right, it's just my opinion that if this is an office building and we've had these things in office buildings before, I don't see how we can deny having it in this one just because it's a special permit. Robin had a very interesting point in terms of, of, you know, what the C of O says. Um, that's an interesting thing, but that's also, um, uh, you know, I, I don't know if there's any consistency in the village because I, you know, because according to our analysis, which I think has really been very beneficial, um, th- this thing's not really allowed anywhere. You, you know, we've, we've come up with all of these different things. And I just keep going back to, well, how have we treated it in the past?
But you see, we don't know. You know, you keep talking about something called an office building. And buildings can have multiple uses in them. Buildings do not only have one use in it. And I don't know the answer to, and I have to tell you, in lots of places, Cs of Os are granted per floor, not per building. It's not like the CFO says, this whole building is one thing. Lots of kinds of certificate in, in a commercial building. Commercial certificates of occupancy be, will be granted based on the particular use of a floor in the building. So calling this as a, an office building is an almost completely misleading term. What is the use of the building? The use of the space within the building? The use of the first floor is an office. The use of the second floor is an office. If a massage parlor is permitted as an office under the village, then it is not a change of use. If the massage parlor is not permitted as an office, then it is a change of use. I don't think there's any doubt that problem is we didn't look at this in time. We didn't take the question. We didn't ask the village, how do you consider? Um, what do you do with, what the, in the, in the cases where we have a a massage parlor in what looks like an office building, what, right, we would colloquially call an office building, is in fact the C, does the CFO apply to the whole building and that's all you need? Or does the CFO say on the first floor is blank and on the second floor is blank? If it says that, then it is, could be a change of use. If it says this is an office building and that's what the CFO is for, and we've done this in the massage parlor cases, then it is not a change of use. Uh, with respect to Greta's issue of hours, I think that's a separate issue. And I think in determining what we want to do, whether it's a problem, you know, whether we should give it or not, those are reasonable considerations in the specifics of the grant of the special permit for this use.
So I can tell you that the last massage establishment that we approved in the fall uh is over by the train station, uh, the corner of Halsted and I, I can't remember that road. Uh, it's on the second floor of a building. Uh, the first floor has a hair salon, metro hair salon. Uh, next to metro uh is an office. I think it actually at one point was used for the Democratic uh campaign committee.
I think that's Ward Avenue.
Yeah, okay. And upstairs is the massage establishment. And you have all of these things. And I guess, again, and I said, I'm just generalizing, what, what I would say is a similar building, an office building. I think that checking out the facts of, of what you're discussing in terms of, of the details of how they're approved. Uh, I don't have an answer. I don't think anybody here has an answer for that. So maybe that should be investigated.
I'm sorry.
I'm just, I was just, I was just going on unprecedented of the last one that we actually approved and these different things within the building.
So if the, if the building, that building has a, a hair salon, which is not and would not be considered an office use and an office and a massage parlor, I don't know whether the village considers that an office building. The fact that it looks from the outside like, you know, a commercial building, it's a commercial building, doesn't make it an office building. And that's what I'm raising here. If that massage parlor has the CFO as an office use, then I would say absolutely, this is not a change of use and we should go along with it. If the CFO for that building says, um, office and hair salon on first floor, massage parlor on second floor, then it's not considering it an office use.
Well, we were told. We were told it was an office building by the building department, correct? Didn't Dennis say that when it was? That's what my notes say.
For which one? The, the one on Ward Avenue?
No, this one. Yeah, I think Robin, the big difference I have with you, Robin, is on the, if any nonconforming use of a building ceases or, you know, or change, or shall not be changed, we have a difference on that. To me, if it's an office building, if it's an office use changes, not if the nature of that specific one changes.
Well, again, again, because you're saying this is something called an office building, but who said? But, but what makes this an office?
Is there a definition?
No, and there's no definition of use in the code.
No, but there is an office district definition and talks about executive administrative business professional and general offices. But okay, but I don't think that was ever an issue. They always said, the building department said to us, so the, the office building, and it is.
I, I don't recall that the off, that the, um, the what they, that they said that. I don't specifically recall. But again, it would depend on what the CFO says. If the CFO for this building says office building, and if the CFO for the other massage parlors and office building just say it, office building, then I'm a hundred percent with you. And I think that I have trouble. Um, so that's my concern here. Now, again, just because if it, even if it isn't an office use, I wouldn't have a problem. That doesn't mean we can't grant it. Given that if we, we find it's not less nonconforming, um, but, um, uh, but so, so I, that's where my concerns are. And I, as I say, I hadn't, you know, we didn't really focus on, I didn't think about some of this until after we had closed the application, um, which is always, sometimes you get to these questions too late. So.
Objection, right?
Cause there's not a, a lot of information. I'm, I'm looking at the, I'm looking at the application now and I don't see a certificate of occupancy for the building in the application.
Oh, I thought there was one.
I'm looking now and I could be missing it. Again, I'm not saying there, there it is, certificate of compliance, that the ground floor office. That's all it says. Doesn't say anything about the second floor. The building is a professional building. That's what, I take it back. So we have it. So the CFO says it's a professional building. I don't know what a professional building is. Professional building is not, is that an office building? It's a professional building, five of laboratory, and I'm a scientist, I'm a profession. Is that making it a professional building? So we call something called a professional building?
The code deals with laboratories as, as under offices, but requires different things.
Yeah, but, but I'm just saying, so.
We don't have a definition for that.
Right. We, so we have, so the CFO says this is a professional building. However, there's a certificate of compliance issued later for ground floor office alteration. So this specifically says office. Um, so it's not an office building. It is a professional building, whatever that means. And obviously, um, massage parlor is a profession, so.
Well, I can also say that the attorney for the applicant Spats was trying to cite the fact that, you know, this business has to be run by a person licensed under section eight of the education as a profession, so has a license. So there would be a real argument there that this, you know, the person who runs the businesses is professional.
Yeah, except that, again, a hair salon is a profession. You have to get a license from the state from a hair salon. And yet you wouldn't consider a hair salon necessarily something in an office building. A, a hair salon is not generally considered an office use.
No, but this is, no, 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 this is a professional building, you said.
Right. Not an, I, but that's what the cer- certificate says.
So, so this is a licensed professional, as is a hairstylist. And the other building on Ward Avenue has both.
Right.
Right. So we don't know, we don't have a, this is nineteen fifty eight. So just because something was considered, you know, you, if you.
Nonconforming.
Right, that's it. And the New York State.
It's never changed.
I agree with that. No, Brian, I agree with you. I agree with you. So given that it says professional building, I might be okay. I might have less of an issue.
It also says on, on the New York State uh, Education Department, it says, quote, massage therapists in New York State are licensed as healthcare professionals and have the same responsibility, provide assessment and treatment services as do other health professionals.
I'm not, you're right. My, my issue had nothing to do with whether this was a profession or not. My issue had to do with, was this an office and what was it considered? Now that I see the CFO, which says that it's a professional building, not an office building, right? That's where this all came up from, because you kept saying this is an office building, office building, office building. So if you're going from one profession to another, I agree, I don't think you need a, um, it's not a change of use. If you're going from one profession to another, it's not a change of use. So if, um, if we've permitted these others in professional buildings, then I think it's okay. Um, and I would respond to Greta's concern by reducing the hours. I think it's legitimate to say in a, in a residential district, having these hours makes no sense. And if you look at the special per, sorry, the special permit, um, sorry, can't, don't have the special permit section open in front of me. Um, let's find the special permit section. Okay, um. I think, you know, we, this is a, this is an issue we can, um, we can, right, we can add other issues into me that you're going into a residential district. The hours are, are important. And so I think that these hours are very long and I would reduce them.
Would you have to be consistent with what others have been approved at, or are you just?
I don't know what they are, and I would think that we, it doesn't matter because. The answer is this is a residential district.
I understand.
So I don't think it has to be consistent. I think it has to be consistent what other professions would normally be. Um, and the dentist below is not off, is not open till these hours. And, um, while offices, if I have an office, I work right, like right now, we're all working, um, way past a reasonable hour. We're not letting, you know, one of the issues, like when you're considering, when, when, when codes have things like accessory uses, one of the, or one of the concerns is how many employees, how many people from the, at the outside are coming? Because that makes an enormous difference on the impact. So I think the impact in a residential district is significant. And I think reducing the hours makes a lot of sense. And if we're going to approve it, I would absolutely want to reduce the hours.
Okay.
So Greta, what type of restrictions, uh, would you think uh, be good for this, this area? Did you have anything in mind?
Well, in, in terms of the hours, I think the hours should be in line with what the hours are of the existing business in that building. And I don't know what they are. I, you know, I'd have to pop by the building and see what the hours are, but consistent with those hours.
Since we don't know those hours, I would say, if, you know, just thinking about a residential district, you don't want something that's open past eight o'clock.
Yeah, I agree.
At night. That's reasonable in a residential district.
You, you know, the, the, it's on Palmer Avenue and it's in a dentist. I'm sure, I, I'm having trouble with my computer. Um, somebody could quickly just look up what the hours are.
Looks like seven.
Tried to do that.
Seven PM?
Yes, I mean, and I could see eight PM seems, oh, you know, okay too.
I, I, I think eight PM, and I'm good with eight PM. I would say ten to eight.
Five days a week?
The dentist could be open six days a week.
A day. If this, I like, if the Saturday, it's typically a half a day.
Is open on Saturdays and, and quite frankly, for this type of a business, if they're catering to a working public, a lot of people may not be able to get there during the day, during the week.
They're closed, uh, they're, according to this, they're only open Monday, Thursday and Friday, one to seven.
Yeah, I think, I think that it's hard to know because even whatever the hours are now, the hours may vary. Um, because of COVID. I mean, I know my dentist is, works three days a week now instead of five days a week because of COVID. So, you know, as post-COVID, he hasn't gone back to full time. So I don't, I think it's a little hard to rely on those.
I would, I would, I would be okay with the ten to eight, six days a week.
Yeah.
I would, okay, I would also.
Yeah. I'm with that.
Monday through Saturday?
Well, they could do Sunday if they want. We don't care. I think it's up to us to decide which, which weekend day should be observed by anybody. So if we say six days a week.
Days a week, right.
And if they want to close on Monday because they want to be open both, because that's when people come on the weekend, I think that's okay too.
Yeah, Robin, I think you're right.
Yeah.
Six, six, six days a week.
Yeah, six days a week, ten, uh, ten to eight. Yeah, that's good. I agree. Let's go. All right. It is now ten, eleven forty, guys. Good. All right. We got a motion on this thing?
Well, I don't think we should have a motion. I think we should come up, can I suggest that Charlie, based on what we've said today, that he drafts a resolution? Um, and that we.
We're out of time on this. We can, we can file the resolution. We can all review the resolution before it's filed.
I, I would, then let's.
Question is, if something finishes, my question is, I think what I'd like to do is, given the time constraints, we're two months late on this, is we can vote on it and indicate our, our decision will be filed within three weeks or four weeks. That's, that's fine. Is we can vote on it and indicate our, our decision will be filed within three weeks or four weeks, that's, that's fine.
Why can't we just, if we don't vote on it tonight, then it's an automatic denial, or we can ask them for an extension of time, I don't see what the big deal is. And we do that, we have done that a lot, so we can ask them again. Wanted to know.
Or we can deny them if they don't want to, yeah, by just not doing it.
Right.
I, I don't think that's right, that's my.
I don't think, um, I don't think if we violate the sixty-two days, I just looked it up in New York Village Law that it's an automatic denial.
Oh, no.
We do have, we, we do have to take action within the sixty-two days, the applicant gave us an extension to this meeting. Um, based on this, I could give Mr. Spats a call tomorrow and, and see if he would. Be willing to give an extension to the special meeting dates that we had identified, uh, earlier.
Um, so, so Charlie, if we don't act, let's go back to, if, if, I mean, we have always been told and we've always understood, and I don't know the answer. Um, that if you don't act, it's an automatic denial, so you're now saying that's not true, so, um.
It's my understanding that the only mechanism in New York Town, City and Village Law. Where you don't act within sixty-two days is for subdivisions, and that's actually an automatic approval. The sixty-day limitation would allow the applicant to go into court to mandate that a vote be taken, but I have yet to seen that happen. I, I could double check this, um, but that's my understanding.
All right, kind of what, kind of like that, well. Is there a reason, just so I know, i- is there a reason to avoid, is there a reason? I don't, I guess what I don't understand is why, I'm looking for that sixty-two day, why we don't do it, subject to our reviewing of the decision, to be consistent with the record. Robin, you got a reason for that?
Other than the fact that we haven't ever done it in the past like that, no, but again.
Done it a few times, okay, all right, I guess maybe not.
No, I don't have any other reason, honestly.
Because I'm just saying, it's perfectly legal and it, it puts us off the hook on, why, you gave, they gave us an extension, we decided it. And there's no decision yet, the decision will be filed, the, it would be approved in accordance with the record. With a decision to be filed consistently with after it's reviewed by the board. That's, that would be my approach, just to be. Done with this, and then it's just a matter of compliance, like with the others, the other, actually the others, we voted on. We, about four of them. I mean, I don't want, if you don't like that, Robin, I, just to me, it's like. It's, you know, it's.
What is it, what is it that we need, we need the, uh, a resolution to understand?
Yeah, to be consistent with what we've been saying, that's a good point, but we've done that, where we voted and then we say, fine, subject to the terms. Charlie, you follow me on this, we just did that with. I mean, I just, that avoids us being, we've at least done our work.
We could follow the general principles of the, of the resolutions that. We've done in the past for these establishments and then add in the specifics that, uh, we went over in this hearing for this particular.
That's true, but what I'm saying.
Charlie, Charlie, just so I can read you, thirteen B of section. Seven dash, seven twelve A of the, of the, of, um, uh, the village. You know, if the law says, default denial of appeal, in exercising its appellate jurisdiction only, if an affirmative vote of a majority of all members of the board. Is not obtained on a motion or resolution within the time allowed by subdivision eight of this section, which is the sixty-two days, the appeal is denied. It is a default.
This is, this is not, the board is considering a special use permit, so it's acting, it's an original jurisdiction.
Yeah, you're right.
The appellate jur- jurisdiction.
You're right. I, I still think, but the sixty-two days still applies.
Correct.
And it's been extended once. So my, my choice would be.
Actually, if it's, if it's original jurisdiction, then it's not an appeal.
No, it's not.
Well, then the six, the sixty-two days doesn't apply, the sixty-two days applied shall decide upon the appeal within sixty-two.
Village Law seven dash, seven twelve dash B, where it talks about special use permits, there still is the sixty-two day provision in there.
Okay.
And Brian, whilst you're looking for that, I wouldn't go so far as to try to even craft the resolution tonight, what I would do is. I would move to approve it in accordance with the discussions. Of us tonight, would set the hours and the limitations, et cetera. And the approval is consistent, we could indicate what they're, and would, subject to our reviewing a resolution, consistent with the discussion.
I understood, and what I was, what I was trying to say was.
How can we just do it, right?
That as part of the record. You know, we need to do this consistently with all the other ones that we've done, so therefore, although we haven't discussed that really at the meeting. Now that's part of the record and, you know, that should, that should help us know what it is. The parameters that, 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 that we're doing, not that we're just, you know, agreeing to something without, you know, we have precedent, we have, uh. All of these other resolutions for massage establishments that we've put through, so. It's, it's gotta be in conformity with those and in conformity with what we discussed at this meeting.
Right, which would be basically the hours, the findings that, uh, it's a professional use, et cetera. And the limitation to six days a week and compliance with all other matters, consistent with prior resolutions as well. How long is this special permit for you, like two years?
Oh, it's, it's actually, yeah, that's defined by code and I believe that it cannot go beyond two years.
And. And just deal with it, and then subject to the resolution, and then Charlie circulates the resolution, either way.
Right, so, so for me, that's enough, um. You, that, that's enough meat for me to make a, a decision, obviously, we still have the opportunity to go, to go through it.
Oh, yeah, no, that's, well, we did that with about three or four of them today, they, it kind of works smoothly, Robin, are you good with that way?
I'm sorry, explain that again, I thought, thought I was.
Oh, no, no, what, what, what we're talking about was approving it with a verbal vote. But outlining the terms of it and that the consistency is with it, and then, and it's, and then, uh, it would be sub, the board would then have the opportunity to review. The actual text of the resolution, like was done with others this, this week, this month.
Right, but the other ones we had the text to review, we always, but we voted on.
No, no, we, we, we voted on them all before, Robin.
Before we had any resolution, now we took a straw poll or didn't vote at all?
I don't think so, Charlie, do you remember, I don't.
No, 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 no corolla.
Right, there was no resolution.
I don't think we had one, but it was so straightforward, we said, well, you know, as long as it's in conformance with the, with the old ones.
I've never, I don't recall, um, you know, ever doing this, now do I care? Um, well, the problem is that if we. I, I guess I don't care, um, I mean, I don't really care, um. If he wants, I, I don't really care, um, about. Well, I don't really care, but I, I'm concerned about what it's gonna say, we're gonna have, we could, it could be. The, the, the resolution could be, what Charlie drafts could be very different, what I think we should be voting on, or what Brian thinks we should be approving. And so it could be significantly changed, but, um, if we want to vote to approve it, consistent with what we said tonight.
That's what I would do.
Yeah, the resolution can't be inconsistent or significantly changed from what you've said tonight.
No, except that, you know, you.
Well, the wording would impact whether I decide to vote for it or not.
And that's the, the problem.
So can we, so it's really, it's a time pressure issue, it's not. Uh, I think we would all love to see the, the, the resolution in front of us that we're gonna vote for.
I know.
Uh, what can we do about, um. Uh, the, the, the time and the ability to, uh, to do that. Does it automatically expire at eight minutes?
Now, I think the, the, the way to deal with it is, and I, I hear everybody's, if we make it subject to like we did on the others. And it's based on the record. I concur, Robin, that you want to review the resolution, as do I and with everybody. But I would think we can, we know the points in it. And we have a record here where we've all expressed our opinions and feelings. So it has to be consistent with that as a matter of, it has to be, that's what we're voting on, otherwise we have a variance. The only reason my, I'm, I advocate that, and I think it's time to move on, and no matter what we do, is, is just that. It's nice not to keep someone waiting another month or two, and we've already kept them waiting for a few months and they've given us an extension.
Oh, but here's my concern, and, and with, with doing that, let's assume Charlie writes it up in a certain way. Cause that he thinks is consistent with the meeting, and let's assume next week, after we get it. You, just from listening to the discussion tonight, you, Dave and Brian, agree that it's consistent with the resolution and I don't.
Right.
And Greta doesn't.
So then we talk about it, then you make it consistent, we have the record of this meeting.
Wait, wait, let me finish, there's a lot of, you can't make it, because we haven't, nobody said, I want it if it says X. Right, it's gotta be the language, is it, how is it the language gonna work, what's it gonna talk about, professional or office? Your view of office is not my view of office, your view of whether it's an office use is not the same as mine. So let's assume he writes it up and at the end of the day, and after he writes it up. David and Brian thinks that's exactly consistent with what we said today and Greta and I don't, what happens then, and that's my concern.
Okay.
That's my concern with having a resolution consistent, um, with what we've discussed today before we've seen it. I mean, yes, I know we always edit them after they're drafted, but at least we have something that we know the logic and the reasons for it, to say that it's consistent.
Okay, all right.
I think it's a good, I think it's a good point, the question is, do we have the time?
I guess we're gonna have, we're having a special meeting, I guess, and they'll wait two more weeks, right? We have one, we have a special, what, what are our dates, we have two special meetings set up. We have the options, right, Brittany is gonna decide what we get to do with our law, it's either the, the twenty-first on Zoom.
Right.
Or the twenty-sixth. Someone go call Kathy, I'll come up, I'm gonna tell her, just keep it extending it. All right, so we're, we're on for the twenty-first, so they'll wait two weeks. And if, if they change the law, we'll wait another week. Or we'll put down, we'll put down Robin's home and we'll all go over there for the meeting and we'll leave the doors open and we'll have an Elijah cup out there, Robin.
No, no, you can't leave the doors open, there'll be noise complaints.
That's right, but we're quiet. And then maybe we can, maybe we'll even put on, I mean, I, I'll try, maybe we can put on another one or two and try to get another for the next month, but. At least this way, and then we have the FEIS to deal with that week.
Wait, the FEIS, are you saying the FEIS at the next, at the May meeting?
No, well, I. Probably should talk about it for half an hour at the April meeting, and then we can deal with it on the May meeting. Unless you want me to move up the, I don't care, I, I really, this is like an albatross, that's all, I just want to get it done, the FEIS is time to deal.
Um, Charlie, can we just do it, oh, it's an in-house discussion, it has to be as open, right, this is not a public hearing, so.
Yeah, and I thought we would have the applicant show up, because, you know, it's always nice to be blamed for something in person, it's nice, but, um. I would guess we should probably, what, what do you think on that, Charlie, you want to talk about that for a minute?
When to have the meeting on?
And I said a min, I, I said a minute, I meant sixty seconds, you're on.
Really up to the board as to when you want to consider the FEIS, based on how much time you think you would need for that meeting.
We have to consider it, we have to then deem it complete, if it's complete. If not, we have to complete it, if we deem it complete and it gets published and then they have, what, ten days for?
I would suggest, we also have to check with AKRF, because AKRF is reviewing the draft FEIS and is gonna be providing comments to the board. So I don't know when their comments would be ready, I know they're reviewing it now, so it might be safer to just.
Well, you know what?
I think they have to get it done for the next ten days, I, I'm sorry, this is really.
Why don't we set it tentatively for, um, the next meeting, whichever that is, the twenty-first or twenty-sixth?
Yeah.
And, um, if AKRF can't be there.
I'm with it.
Then we do it in the May meeting, but otherwise, let's do it in the April meeting, I think that makes sense, because then what we would do at the April meeting would be this. There were like two other things that we closed tonight.
Right, exactly.
On the FEIS, and that's not a lot.
No, and even if we don't complete the FEIS thing, let's get with it, and, cause I think that's gonna be one that everybody says, okay, I need a couple of weeks. And I'll, I'll keep space for the May meeting, so we don't go nuts on it.
But I will say, we need this resolution on Palmer drafted by tomorrow.
I, what about tonight, oh, tomorrow is what, Saturday?
It's three minutes away.
No, it's. Oh, yeah, come on, Charlie, you don't talk to us.
This is my fourth night meeting of this week, so I'm a little fried after.
Ah.
Getting quite late.
Yeah, I think it's time to, um.
Okay, all right, so let's go with that, and, uh, this was very, very, I, I think this was very helpful and interesting and good. And I will share one comment that I've, Charlie and I have laughed about it, well, someone should revise the code to this village.
Oh, that's clearly.
I, 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 and you know what, Robin, although everybody says that for twenty years, it, the deers, something doesn't work when we say that, right? We used to actually write letters and proposals and say, listen, I also wanted to get an alternate, I wrote a whole thing once with Barry Weperman about why would, they should appoint alternates and. I don't, they didn't like it, to me. From an applicant standpoint, an alternate is like, think, plus it's great for a village, because you always have an alternate who's kind of following it. So you have, someone can step in if someone's not here, et cetera. All right, we will see everybody on the twenty-first by Zoom, unless Brittany changes the law on us, and then we're gonna have to come in and see Brittany on the twenty-sixth. I thank you very much, Brittany, you've done a fantastic job this month and it, I know you get a lot of push and pull, thank you, all right? I don't say that lightly, it's not fun to be there where everybody says, and there are three people waiting and you know, two of them don't want, and the third one won't like it either, so.
That's true.
Right, like being a lawyer, right, I mean, you know, everybody just, everybody agrees that what the problem was with the case, right, both sides. All right, so there's a motion to leave, to adjourn, those in favor can leave, those who don't can stay.
Good night, everybody.
Good morning, everyone.
Yeah, good morning.
All right, that's what you were waiting for, and take care.